There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order, not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol, came in and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
You look out my back window here on the east side and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock and at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do and the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community in a county that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 211. We're here to support you.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada, a new hero will emerge. One who is ready.
Meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Nevada County Board of Supervisors, August 22nd, 2023, in the beautiful town of Truckee, California. Craig, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
We'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Nevada County Board of Supervisors, August 22nd, 2023, in the beautiful town of Truckee, California. Craig, would you lead us in the pledge, please? All right, before we actually get into this meeting, I'd like to make a presentation on behalf of the full Board of Supervisors and I'm going to go down in front and do this and try to speak loudly, okay? Jennifer. Oh, there she is. Jennifer, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors of Nevada County, thank you and the town of Truckee for hosting us for breakfast and helping us put together what we expect to be a wonderful meeting today. So this was put together by all the supervisors, contributions.
We can leave it here if you want. Here, Jim, why don't you hold it?
One, two, three. Perfect.
All right. Deep breath here. Forget all these notes. Madam Clerk, is any corrections or deletions to the agenda?
Chair Schofield, we do have one correction to the agenda. We'd like to clarify for anybody watching or listening that if you would like to watch this meeting on cable TV in Eastern County, the proper channels to watch it on are optimum channels 18 and 78.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And with that, we are going to go into our general public comment. And very quickly, I want to say if you are watching online today, because of a small time delay of approximately 40 seconds on the online and cable livestream, members of the public wishing to make public comment by phone should call in at the beginning of each agenda item rather than waiting until you hear us asking for public comment. So if you have public comment and you're online right now, get ready to call in or do call in right now. And with that, I'll open it up to public comment, anybody in the chambers. And the presentations are made to our right.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Egan. I'm with the Friends of the Truckee Library Board, and I want to join everyone else in welcoming you to Truckee. It's great to have you here. We really appreciate that. But more importantly, I want to specifically thank you, the entire board, Hardy, and the county staff for the time and devotion and the energy you're putting into this collaborative library effort that we have up here. We know it's big, you know it's big, and we deeply appreciate it. We also appreciate the efforts of the town and the community who are supporting Friends of the Truckee Library in this effort. It's truly a three-way challenge and a three-way collaboration. We've been collaborating for really going on four years now. I remember we made a presentation to the board four years ago. I'm sure Supervisor Schofield and Supervisor Hook remember that as well as Hardy. And we made a presentation four years ago saying the only way we're going to do this is when we're collaborating. And I am very pleased to say that we see that collaboration evident every single day. So thank you so much and thanks to the staff and to the town of Truckee as well, and the Truckee community. Thank you. And I apologize for leaving. I'm missing a meeting right now.
We understand, Kathy. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Madam Clerk, is there anyone online?
Chair Schofield, there are no callers waiting for general public comment.
Okay, I think we've given a long enough time. We will close the public comment portion. And we will go into our consent calendar. These items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. The Board of Supervisors will act upon them at one time without discussion. Any board member may request that an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion. Members of the public wishing to ask questions or hear discussion on items listed under the consent agenda may raise their concerns to the board members prior to the consent agenda being introduced. The supervisors will take the concerns under consideration to decide if there is adequate reason to remove the item from the consent agenda. Board members, any items you wish to have pulled? Sue, Lisa, you okay? Any general public items to be pulled? I should have reminded folks to call in right away if there was anything to be called. Hopefully, you're calling in right now. We will actually hold off a little while longer team. People can still call in. But at this point, the only item that we would have pulled, and we'll pull the item first before we do the entire consent. Is that okay? All right. Then at this time, we will go into item number 25, is it what you said? Which is acknowledged Supervisor Bullock's acceptance of letter resignation from Kevin Murphy and appointment of James Dill as District Five representative to the Fish and Wildlife Commission. Hardy?
Thanks, Chair Schofield. I just wanted to mention a special thanks to Kevin Murphy, who's not in the room today, for our Fish and Wildlife Commission with Chris and I. He just did an outstanding job, pioneered a bunch of change that we've been working on with Hurstell and other communities. I just want to put out a special thanks to him and also welcome James Dill, who's in the audience today as the new Fish and Wildlife Commissioner. Really excited to work with him. And I just wanted to recognize your contribution to the Rotary Fishing Derby for, I think, 15 years or more, somewhere near there. 23, okay. So Jim's done 23 years of the Rotary Fishing Derby, which is kind of this highlight of our season every year where Rotary gets all the kids out to fish. And I'm just really looking forward to working with you and thanks so much for your service to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Hardy. Is there any public comment on this item? Anyone that would like to maybe reconsider Mr. Dill for that commission? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion Supervisor Hook. Second Supervisor Hook. Madam Clerk, roll call.
District Four.
Yes.
District Three.
Yes.
District One.
Yes.
District Five. District Two.
Yes. With that, we will go to our consent agenda. Madam Clerk, was there anyone that called in?
Chair Schofield, there are no callers. We have received written public comment on item number 13.
Very good.
That public comment was distributed to the board. It was from Cheryl and Larry Andreessen. It was regarding environmental review and the Hurstell Bridge project, especially regarding this stairway.
I think we're all aware of that. We've all received that letter. And Hardy, is there any reason to pull the item? Very good. Then we will proceed with the consent agenda and I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion Supervisor Swarthout, Second Supervisor Hall. Madam Clerk?
District Four.
Yes.
District Three.
Yes.
District One.
Yes.
District Five.
Yes.
District Two.
Yes. All right. So now we're going to do things a little bit differently than we usually do and we're going to go into the announce announcements portion of the meeting. For those in Truckee who don't have the opportunity to watch us, this will just give you a feel for what we do as supervisors throughout the rest of the time when we're not in our regular meetings. Hardy, I'm going to start this out with you, District Five.
Thank you, Chair Schofield. Once again, thanks to the town for having us here today. It's fun to be up here and not have to jump the summit to get to another meeting. I have been pretty busy the last couple of weeks and I know we do this for everybody who's here. Every two weeks, we give an announcement of what we've done. So I wanted to highlight our East Side Coalition of Firewise Communities meeting that Craig Gricebach and I attended the U.S. Forest Service. It was a great time. We had people from the entire county representing the firewise communities and that coalition coming together. A lot of work's been done to try and assemble a specific East Side firewise coalition of communities. I think I'm saying that right. Bringing specific resources and trying to get these communities signed up. We're working with the Fire Safe Council and others. So it was a great meeting. The Forest Service, Craig hosted, I think, at the Forest Service building, but we had everybody in the room. It was great. Great to see everybody up here for that. I hosted Senator Alvarado Gill. We had the Truckee Fire Protection District, District Attorney Jesse Wilson, Sheriff Moon, and her senior staff, and then Friends of the Truckee Library, and had her and got to sit down and talk to her on a casual conversation basis for about an hour and a half over lunch. Talked about the regional issues we face. I know she went to the town for the groundbreaking ceremony and then met with Placer County. So that was a great opportunity to have her in district here and talk to her about our specific needs and challenges that we face here in the eastern county. Met with Bright Futures for Youth and Enterprise Rental Car Company, their community advocate and support program. Allison and I got the opportunity to talk to them a little bit about their sponsorship of our Heart of Gold Bike Race that's coming up here in October. We'll talk more about that, maybe a specific resolution later identifying the Heart of Gold Race and enterprise commitment to our community. It was amazing to me. They, she stated a figure, I think it was $68 million they give, and all that giving is handled locally. And Nevada County is a recipient of that. So I was very proud of that company. For corporate America, it's pretty cool to see that happen. I met with economic strategy and our economic strategy consultant, who's providing some reporting for us. I think the name is Integrated Communication Strategies. Thanks, Barbara's shaking her head. Okay. So I met with him and talked to them about our economic strategy and the upcoming set of work they're doing for us over the next six months. It was fun to talk to them about what they think is working in Nevada County and what we think is happening. Jeff and I attended a really good meeting on the Reno-Roseville Rail Project. And Jeff can correct me in the, is that the name of what we're calling it? Regional Railroad. Okay, thank you. So Placer County, the effort is to connect rail and expand rail services from the Bay Area essentially to Reno and open up those tracks and get more people on rail and out of their cars and onto the train. The complexity associated with that transportation initiative was mind-boggling to me. I was really blown away at the timeframe and the complexity and enhancing the station and tracks and all those things. But we learned a lot. We're going to stick with it and hopefully whoever's in these seats after we're done gets to see an expanded rail service. Jeff and I met with Jeff Dellis and then also Dr. Craig Rowe from TTUSD. It was a great meeting talking about the youth leadership commission that the board has adopted at the last piece and what role Eastern County plays in that and what role TTUSD can play in integrating students from the high school into different commissions here. And then also what happens after kids from Truckee graduate from college and they want to come back and make a life and make a living here and how that works was good. I met with Martis Camp with Scott Bauer, talked to him a lot about our sustainability summit happening up there in September, coming up pretty quick. I met with the TTUSD Board President Catherine Rolfe from the airport. I'm sorry, TTA D, Truckee-Tahoe Airport District Board President Kat Rolfe. Talked to her a little bit about what's going on at the airport. We had our CCC planning meeting. That's going to be on transportation and the town is going to play a big role in talking about their efforts in transportation. So that's going to be good. Sue and I attended the local agency permission, LAFCO, local area permission commission, got the words wrong, LAFCO meeting. Got an update on the consolidation for the fire piece. Had a Hurstell community meeting out there on the bridge. It was great to talk to everybody about both the sign plan that's on today's agenda, the stairs, the capital improvements for the bridge, fish and wildlife. Senator Dolly and Assembly Member Dolly have contributed some resources to understanding how recreation impacts that community. So it was great to go out there and talk with the Hurstell community on that. Had a meeting on Forest and Firewise Coalition, Fire Safe Council meeting. I had been meeting with some of the folks from Donner Summit on the speed limit on the road on Donner Pass Road. We'll talk more about that. And then the field trip later today, maybe we can point out and talk about some of the things on Donner Summit as well. Some van life camping, people like to pull off a forty and camp out there, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but the community needs to understand a little bit more about what that means to them. And then we had a great meeting yesterday with Friends of the Truckee, Friends of the Truckee Library. Next steps, formulation of the JPA, funding alternatives, a number of different pieces that we've been working toward for almost a year. So it was a good meeting. Jeffrey and I and Mandy got to go down and meet in tribal headquarters with the tribal chairman and the tribal vice chair for the Washou' tribe. It was a good meeting. It was a sobering meeting. It was not necessarily easy, but it was definitely effective in understanding what the tribe wants from us and resource protection, cultural acknowledgement and things like that. So it was a great opportunity for us to sit down with them and we've made a commitment to meet with them again soon. And Jeff's doing some work to do some signs and some updates on our resource protection areas. And then we had a sustainability summit meeting. So that's it for me, Chairman.
Hardy?
Thank you, Chair. Can you all hear me okay with the, okay, different microphones here? So I think it's been several meetings since we've done announcements. So I don't think I've actually been able to talk about the NACO meeting that I attended recently, National Association of Counties, which is a national association of all the counties in the United States. I'm on the Public Lands Committee. And at that meeting, well, after that meeting, I've received notice that we established a new subcommittee. It's an outdoor recreation subcommittee in that committee, and I was appointed chair of that subcommittee. So very excited about that, to be bringing back the outdoor recreation issues to that national committee. Those are issues that have languished. They've been over, other issues have sort of taken that over, but we're bringing that back. And in fact, we had our first meeting of that subcommittee. There's a new foundation for American Public Lands that BLM is establishing. It's going to be a sister agency to a number of the other federal agencies who also have foundations. And they are holding an invite-only listening session. And our staffer on the Public Lands Committee will be attending that on September 7th in Las Vegas. So we had an hour-long call to discuss all of the issues we're seeing in on outdoor lands with regard to recreation, so he can provide that input. So that should help establish what that foundation will be looking at. So I'm really excited about this heightened attention to those issues that we have in the western county and I know you have up here as well. As well at NACO, with the help of Jeffrey Thorsey, we got two resolutions passed, which means that this national association can and should be lobbying on these issues at the federal level. So the two resolutions, one was the need for more staff on public lands to deal with recreation and the need for streamlining hiring processes for those agencies. And the second one was just sort of a starting shot across the bow, asking the correct federal agencies and congressional committees to look at the fire insurance issues that we've had out here in California and across the country, not only for homes, but for businesses and even our own fire agencies. So look forward to seeing where that's going to go and making sure that the advocacy that we do at that level directly reflects the issues that we have here in Nevada County. We had a Yuba River, South Yuba River cohort meeting again, which is always great. We've been highlighting the dangers of getting into the river and now the fire dangers in the canyon. I did attend, we're, the county is putting on a couple of webinars on our hazard mitigation plan and our wildlife wildfire protection plan. There's three plans out there right now. And so I listened in on that. I thought it was, they were excellent. It's a good explanation of how the plans work together and what we need to hear from the public. So if you haven't heard about that, please go online and take a look at that and listen in on one of those webinars. I also took the, spent some time with our consultant on economic development here in the county and that was a great conversation. I attended the regular meeting that CSAC and RCRC, the State Association of Counties and the Rural Counties Association, is having regular meetings with PG&E on the issues we continue to have with them in terms of vegetation management, picking up vegetation that they've brought down, issues when they come in and establish a location on our lands. So I did attend that and raised all the same issues that I've raised publicly and privately with them, continue to advocate for our needs with that big corporation that hasn't always done right by us. We did have a CSAC executive meeting where we talked about the status of our at-home initiative, which is feeding into the governor's changes to the homelessness, to bringing more resources and changing the program that addresses homelessness, which of course is implemented at the county level, much of it. And then also at the upcoming MHSA, mental health, changes that he is advocating for, some bills that are out there. We have some great concerns about and we spent some time talking about those and what the counties can do to try to get those bills and actions done in such a way that works best for the counties. I did meet with the youth commission. I met with the sustainability summit group and had a staff meeting on cannabis, where we're going with the cannabis regulations. And I'm going to stop with that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Heidi. Sue?
Okay. Yeah, it has been busy. I know. I'm looking at this list. I'm not going to go over all of them because that's kind of crazy. So, but I want to say it was great at LAFCO to be able to look and see how the fire service issue is still moving forward. We had those messages from the chief and that was, it's uplifting to see the work that's getting done through that community. And it's been fun to watch the community come and build. So I attended the Rough and Ready Grange breakfast and then they also have a firehouse dinner now. And it's really exciting to see that community come together because they're so appreciative of the work being done so that they're going to have fire services and ready. I've had so many constituent meetings the last couple of weeks over all kinds of different issues from cannabis to building to planning. I've been up in North San Juan for a couple of meetings with folks with our new emergency water system that we're hoping to finish, which was a great project. So I can't wait to see that come to fruition. I went to our monthly RCRC. We have an online meeting with all of our legislative issues that we have going on. So it's really great because then we can come back and really discuss those with what's going on in our county and how they relate. I had a good meeting with SSVMS, which is the Sierra Nevada ambulance contract was being renewed. And I'm on that JPA. So we had a really good, robust meeting about that. And it's kind of interesting to see the amount, we need paramedics. We need people to go to school and be paramedics. So that was a really interesting conversation about how we do that and keep our ambulance services. And I will say, we are really fortunate in our area for Nevada County. We do a really, really good job for the rural side we're in, but there still is always that need. And we do run out of ambulances. Met with youth commission. That was really exciting to see that come to fruition. What amazing bunch of young people that look like our leaders for the future, right? So that was a lot of fun. I really watched, loved that, watching that process. I went to a RCRC, hosted a water resiliency webinar. It was really great. It was about drought and how we're going to manage that over the next 20 years. It was really, it was well done. And if anybody's interested, I have the slideshow for that and you could have it and look at it because it was interesting. Of course, the highlight was Nevada County opening ceremonies day. And I'll let Ed tell more about that because that's his special place. But Nevada County Fair was incredible. Working with the kids, working with some of the booths at the nonprofits, it was a lot of fun. I never made so many baked potatoes in my whole life.
And they were fantastic.
Thank you. Yeah, so that was a lot of fun. And it was fun to see the 501(c)(3)'s really do well this year and the people that came out and supported the communities because that's probably all of their biggest fundraisers for the year.
Madam, I have my thing. I went to the salute to their first responders, which was great and sponsored. And I love that the people that donate, you know, we all live in a community that's very generous. And I think that gives a shout out to those folks and shop there, you know, because they're always really working for our community and giving. It's just amazing to me to see the, because that's a big, that's a big fundraiser for those folks too. And it was interesting. They've given out over a million dollars to different local first responder agencies. I thought that was pretty impressive. We had our Yuba Cohort meeting. And of course, it's always tends to be a bit of a challenge when we're dealing with, like you do here, when the weather's hot, our river crossings are really challenged. We don't have great parking there. And working with that relationship we have with state parks and Forest Service and all those areas. And now we're heading into fire season. And so how do we really start to message that? So that was a good meeting. I went to Mountain County Water Resources Association. I'm on their board. We were hosted by Eldorado Hills. So we met with some of the folks from over there. It was really interesting. So they, we deal with water issues. Water is one of the things for me that is important because even in our community, water is life and how we manage it. So really interesting in that, met on cannabis regulations, have had a couple constituent meetings on cannabis. And I think that's probably enough for today. You couldn't kick me.
Very good, Sue. Lisa?
Thank you. So yeah, it's been a, it's been a busy month or so. So I'm just going to highlight a few things because I've probably been to 100 meetings in the last 30 days. But I finished my new supervisor training in Sacramento at the end of July that's put on by CSAC. So I guess I'm, I'm official. And I look forward to seeing some of my fellow classmates at the CSAC conference in November. Thanks to Supervisor Hall did a presentation on our, one of the days about disaster preparedness. And it was great. So thank you for that. I had the opportunity a few weeks ago to tour around several people that came up from Visit California who are doing a revamp of some of the work, tourism work. And they were great. We, Kimberly Parker and I toured, toured them around some of the highlights. We only had a couple hours with them. Unfortunately, we didn't get to come up here, but I'm guessing that they probably came up here on their own. But they were really impressed with Grass Valley, Nevada City. They, it was, they were here during the fair. So we gave them tickets to the fair. I'm not sure if they went, but they would have loved it if they did. I did attend the opening ceremonies at the fair. And just a shout out to Andrew Trigg and his group. They put on a great fair this year. It was, you know, one of the best that I've been to in a really long time. So everybody was having a great time. I had the opportunity a few weeks ago to go out and tour an area that sits between, it's, it's my district, but it's the county, it's where the county and the city of Grass Valley come together. And thanks to the sheriff and her staff, they gave me a great presentation on some of the issues that we have on a particular piece of property. And then they took me out there on the little four wheel drive razors. And I got a tour and it was fascinating to go through that area because you see it from the road, but you have no idea what's back there. And, and I said, there's some homeless issues back there. And my comment was until there's some development here, this probably won't change because you need to put people in there to kind of take care of some of those issues. And then the next meeting I had after I was out with the sheriffs was with a land use planner who's actually working with a client on a development for that property. So it was a really great, it was great to see it and then great to understand what the potentials were there. So we're going to continue to work with them, working with the sheriff's office. We're hopefully going to do a cleanup out there and get rid of some of the trash and debris that's been left by people. And then finally, I just want to say a big shout out to all the people who I met with yesterday, the Chamber of Commerce, Kristin York with the Sierra Business Council, Jen from Town Manager, and then the Director for the Contractors Association. I've been trying to come up here for the last few months to really kind of get a better idea of what's going on up in Truckee and with our partners. So thank you all for taking the time yesterday to meet with me. It was very enlightening and I learned a lot about what's going on up here. And I also am appreciative to all the folks talking about collaboration between the East and West. So I look forward to continuing those conversations. Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. Well, I just took the last two weeks of my activities. And for those of you that may not know it, prior to being a supervisor of Nevada County, I was the CEO of the Nevada County Fair for 26 years. So it kind of gets in your blood. So when the fair comes along, that's pretty much what I do. I try not to schedule any other meetings. So this year was a really special year, I believe. First of all, the weather was perfect, beautiful weather for fair. And the new CEO that we have out there is a young man who during my reign as a CEO, was active at the fairgrounds as a youth, was involved with all parts of the fair, including the draft horse classic. And this gentleman became a part of the county of Nevada and was instrumental in the communications department with the Sheriff's Department. And has done an excellent job, did an excellent job, and I think is still assisting in some ways with the new dispatch center that we have out there. So it was really, really great to have this young man coming in as the CEO of the fair. So that was opening day. We saw that. And then the, kind of the highlights, and I was out there every day, except for one, it's been long enough that I don't have to be out there every day. But the junior, the Ag Mechanics Auction, which is an auction of the FFA primarily youths, and that their items that are built are auctioned off. And I think we raised $105,000, which was a record year for that one. And then the highlight of the fair is the Junior Livestock Auction. Sue's very, very aware of this. She's a great contributor to it and has a granddaughter that's involved with it also. And I don't know how much that raised. Do you know the number? Well, it was over a million dollars that go to the youth of Nevada County. So it, it's just a special time and it was a special year for the fair. I did the interview with our economic development team, Mr. Bill Mueller, that Kimberly Parker is running. I think that's going to be a very, very, very good program for Nevada counties. We really kind of clarify as to what economic development means and what do we need to go forward. And along that same line, we had, I sit on the Economic Resource Council, which is primarily the western side of Nevada County. And we found out during our executive meeting that we had received a grant, a SURF grant. SURF, and you guys can probably help me a little bit here, is like a $600 million state program that's come out for community development. And the grant that the ERC has gotten is more for the planning stages of it. And it's regional, which includes Nevada, Placer, Eldorado, and I believe Sacramento County also. So there's two organizations that kind of put together all of the major aspects of it. The part that we have is a group called Valley Vision out of Sacramento. The eastern side of that region is Sierra Business Council out of Truckee here. So I think we'll be deeply involved with that. And I know that it's a, it's a forum to say, what do our communities need in going forward into the future? And I know by the end of the year, our planning session has to come up with a certain amount of projects that we think are going to be instrumental in moving forward for our side of the county. And then it will be going on up here on the eastern side also. So we're looking forward to that, hoping that it really amounts to something for us. We did our mayor and managers breakfast, which is something that we do, the mayors of the, of the towns, the cities, and the county, myself as a chair, have breakfast once a month. And we rotate where we're going to be. And I have to say that we come up here for these meetings and we go, oh my gosh, you know how far it is to travel up here, Jennifer? You know, you know what it's like going over that mountain over there? Hardy does it every two weeks. You guys, and even in inclement weather, Jennifer, in this case, Mayor Lindsay, Jennifer wasn't able to make it this time, but Lindsay was there. And Danny, your Chief of Police, which was great. And it's just that when you talk about collaboration between east and west side of our county, there's a lot that goes on there. Those are really enjoyable meetings and we appreciate the efforts that you guys make to come over that hill. I think the only other thing that I did do that I'd like to point out, and I think almost all of us did, we went to the Law Enforcement and Fire Protection Council fundraiser. This is an organization that rises money for our law enforcement. Sheriff Moon has been a recipient of many of their dollars and our fire agencies also. So that, that was a fun event also. So thank you. I think our announcements went very well. Hardy, good idea.
Real quick.
Yes, you may.
Congressman Kylie came up and visited us in East County and had a great meeting. It was specifically with the Forest Service and we were, we rode, I think I'm not conflating two meetings. We rode e-bikes. And then, and then we had a meeting with Kevin Kylie. And so he came out and then we toured some of the forestry fire protection areas that have been completed by the Forest Service, O6, Big Jack and Little Jack, Field Defensible Space Profile Zones kind of over here, and then talked about e-bikes and recreation. So it was a great meeting. I just wanted to acknowledge him for taking the time. And if you follow the news or follow the congressman, he's been in district here, I think, I'm going to estimate six times in the last three weeks. So he's put a lot of effort into making contributions to our community and being present here, which is, which is great to see his, his presence here. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you, Hardy. Okay. Oh, you were there just with the governor. Yeah, right, right.
I would have been there for the airport.
But we weren't invited.
I questioned that.
Very good. All right, we're going to move on on our agenda. And at this point, we're coming into what I think is a very special part of our agenda. And of course, it's listed as individual board members and District Five Supervisor Hardy Bullock, but I'd like to kind of kick this one off. The next one is a certificate of recognition for Judy Price for 21 years of public service as a town clerk for the town of Truckee and for many contributions to the greater Truckee community. And I would like to remind anybody that's online, if they'd like to call in and make comments, to make your calls right now while we're doing this portion of it. And then we'll get to you on a very timely manner. Is that good, Teen? All right. Judy, I'm going to pass this over to Hardy for the presentation. And then we're going to, we're going to come down, we're going to come down front for a picture op. But I just run off the bat, say thank you for your time. She reminded me last night that I came here to a council meeting a number of years ago as dressed as a pirate. It was part of the theme of the Nevada County Fair. And also the fact that Carol used to do facilitating for the town of Truckee up here was one of her more enjoyable groups that she worked with. And once I became a supervisor, those went away. She's always thanked me for that. But Judy, thank you so much for your time. And I'm going to turn it over to Hardy for the presentation.
Thank you, Chair Schofield. Judy, congratulations. I'll just say that from the bottom of my heart. Pretty cool, 20, 21 years of service. And being in government has a lot of ups and downs. And you've weathered those with such grace and gone through those periods kind of carrying the town, but also carrying the region and all the people that support all the special districts and government agencies and, and nonprofit community that relies so heavily on being connected to the town, understanding what the town, the town council are doing and the executive leadership and all those things. And we were commenting that I, there was this mass exodus from the airport like 18 years ago. And there were three staff members and I was one of them. And I had like three jobs. I was like the district, I was like the clerk, the noise guy and the environment guy or something. But I called Judy and Judy is like, okay, here's what you're going to have to do. I had that job for three months. So she got me to the point where, where we got there. And it was really fun to work with you. And then I think the other piece, and I think Rory's in the background, the cameras, but we, you essentially turned on the whole broadcasting of public meetings through the video and connection and Suddenlink as a provider and all those different things to make kind of this really transparent method of people dialing into public meetings through the local TV channel. So, and many other things that we're going to read about here. And I don't know, Chairman, if you want to give Judy a moment to speak before or after?
I'd like to have the others, yes, we'll find, have the other speak and anybody in the public that would like to come up and make comments about Judy also. Yeah. So we'll read that at the end, just, just before we do the, the photo op. So Heidi, any comments?
I didn't have the opportunity to work with you, but thank you for your service. Anyone who lasts that long and contributes that much is great.
Sue?
Yeah, Judy, you kind of are leaving a legacy. When you look back and you look from the webpage all the way, and then the one that's closest to my heart is what you've done with the Veterans Day up here is incredible. So thank you for that because that's like one of my passions as well. Where my bread on Fridays for folks that are still deployed. And what you did with that was, I mean, that is amazing. So for me, thank you for that. And I wish you well in this next chapter because you've given a lot to this side of the county and the whole county and the whole. So best wishes.
Thank you, Sue. Lisa?
Thank you. Congratulations on retirement. It's, it's really good. I did it four years ago. And then I got elected to this job. So I came out of retirement, but it is fun. You know, my experience working with Judy was when I was with the city of Grass Valley. And if you ever needed to communicate with anybody up here, if you needed anything from up here, if there was an event going on, Judy was the person. And I always looked forward to getting her emails because they were very detailed. We always knew where we were going, what time we needed to be there, who was going to be there. And, you know, all the logistical stuff was taken care of. So thank you for your service. And I know you'll be missed. Hopefully, are you staying in Truckee? Okay, well, we'll welcome you as a Grass Valley, I will be your supervisor if you're down in Grass Valley. So thank you for your service.
All right. Is there anyone from the public that would wish to come up and make a comment? Please do. You're encouraged to do it.
Chair Schofield, can I make a comment from right here? It's me, Sarah, right here.
Yes, you can, Sarah.
I had the pleasure of working with Judy on Nevada County's broadband work group. She contributed from the Truckee perspective. And she also helped to advance broadband for the town of Truckee, like doing things that I wasn't part of. But I just felt like she was really going above and beyond in her role and really became very knowledgeable in that area. And I hope that there is somebody who can pick up that passion project in her absence and continue it because she really was a valuable member of that team.
Thanks, Sarah. Allison?
No, just shared appreciation. I think that you really reflect the values of the town, the Truckee, of just being an active participant and collaborator and providing support where needed. So thank you and congratulations on your retirement. And we really wish you well.
Madam Clerk?
Judy, this is Teen. On behalf of the Clerk of the Board, congratulations. And thank you for all of your event coordination, your resource sharing, and especially your help with sharing your staff for last minute agenda posting and, and all sorts of weather. So thank you on behalf of the, the various clerks to the Planning Commission and the Board for the county.
Madam Clerk, is there anybody online?
Chair Schofield, we have no written comments and no callers.
Okay. And I think what I'd like to do is have Hardy read the certificate. And then Judy, I'd like you to come up and make comments. And then we'll come together for a photo op. Hardy?
I was just going to mention one more thing. The, in West County, we have obviously our building and everything, tax collection and Sheriff's Office and all these other things. But Judy coordinates all these loose ends in East County. So I see these chains of emails like Hardy, come pick something up from the tax box. And we're opening something and we're posting something, all these, they just go on and on and on. And finally, I get to the end and I just get one from her telling me what I'm supposed to do or pick up and transport to West County. So thank you for doing those tasks on behalf of Nevada County because it's not part of your job, but it serves everybody in our shared constituency in East County. So thank you. I just wanted to mention that. And I'll, I'll read the, this is a certificate of recognition for Judy Price. The County of Nevada Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in recognizing and thanking Judy Price for her 21 years of public service as the Truckee Town Clerk and thanking her for many contributions to the community. For over 21 years, Judy Price has played an integral role in serving the Truckee community through her role as the Truckee Town Clerk and her ability to build relationships across the community. When Judy started as a town clerk in 2002, Judy worked hard to foster productive relationships, enhance the mission of the town clerk enhance the mission of the town clerk's office, support the town manager, town council, and exhibited the best of public service. Her approach not only led to improved outcomes, but promoted a positive approach and working relationships that underscored the value of productivity through collaboration. Throughout the years, Judy has gone above and beyond to advance well-being of the community, including but not limited to transforming the annual Truckee Veterans Day event into a town coordinated fair that adequately honors the veterans in the community, improving relationships between the various government agencies in the region through the formation of the regional clerks group, supporting various county departments to ensure the seamless delivery of public services to Eastern County residents, serving as a core member of Nevada County Broadband Working Group, and working directly with the Nevada County Clerk of the Board to assist with agenda postings during times of extreme weather, limited staff, or at times when an emergency errata agenda was warranted. Judy's positive and collaborative approach to meeting the needs of the greater community truly embody the spirit of the Truckee way. Therefore, the County of Nevada Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in recognizing and thanking Judy Price for over 21 years of public service dedicated to serving the town of Truckee and building relationships to improve service to our community. Thank you.
I just want to say after listening to all of the reports coming out, that I'm truly humbled that you've taken a few minutes out of this meeting to recognize when you've done so much for this community. Thank you all. That's it.
And you know, Judy, I think we would all would say, everything that we do up here, we can't accomplish without people like yourself. So thank you. This next item is a certificate of recognition for Allison Schwedner for her efforts, leadership, guidance, and dedication towards improving the lives of families and youth in the Truckee Tahoe region. And I'm going to turn this over to Hardy. I don't Alice, actually know Allison, so I'm not even sure I pronounced her last name right. Hardy, Hardy, would you take that over, please?
Thank you, Chair Schofield. It's Schwedner.
Schwedner.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Allison, I just wanted to congratulate you on your career here in Truckee. And there's so many points of our community and the nonprofit community that you've connected with and served. And I'd like to read the certificate of recognition, but also mention your work recently with the co-ed and some of the things that have worked through, um, changes in our community and how to respond to them and adapt to them, um, over time. And I know that you're going on to work for a consulting firm that hopefully we get to work together in the near future and you get to understand and bring all this, um, community experience and support together to then serve in a different capacity, the same community that you love and you live in and you work. So I want to mention that. And I also want to mention that Phoebe Bell couldn't be here today. She's testifying in the Senate today. And she and I talked on the phone this morning, I called her specifically and she said, uh, and she was getting choked up, but she wanted me to express her thanks to you and wanted to support, um, this certificate of recognition. So I want to pass that along from her specifically. So thank you for, for your service.
Thank you, Hardy. Heidi, any comment?
Yeah, Allison, I didn't realize you were leaving, but, um, I'm, I'm glad you're staying involved in this, um, in all of the topics that you've been involved with. I think I came on the board right before that big consolidation of all the agencies up here and, um, just was really impressed with how that happened, all the different missions and all the different egos and all the different leaders and all the different programs. Just seemed like it went really, really well and I've just been impressed with your leadership and, um, congratulations for the certificate. And I'm really, really glad you're continuing to stay in this, in this field.
Well, I just echo what Heidi said. You just have given so much in 20 years. So we just wish you well and I know that we'll still see you in the background somewhere because I can't imagine you leaving 100% from this area. So we really do thank you, Allison.
Lisa?
Yes, thank you for your service. 20 years is a long time. Much appreciated by the community.
So Allison, how many presentations have you made to the Board of Supervisors?
A handful.
A handful, yes. And you know, I think that each time that I've heard that, and I certainly should have known how to pronounce your last name, I'm sorry. But I always thought about how impressive it is what you have been able to accomplish up here and always thought, I'm not sure we have that same organizational structure on the Western side. And so, um, we're, we're really, um, I'm pretty amazed at what you've been able to do up here. And I, I hear they're saying you're going to stay with it. So that's greatly appreciated too. So Allison, why don't you come over and make a few comments? And then, um, we'll read the, uh, the proclamation and then we'll have a photo op.
Great. Well, um, this one? Okay. Hit the button. Yeah. Okay. Um, well, thank you Supervisor Bullock and the rest of, um, the Board of Supervisors for the recognition. Um, it means a lot to me and I'm very humbled and very grateful and really appreciate the opportunity I've had to work with the county, to work with Health and Human Services, Boys and Girls Club, the foundation, the school district, the town, all of our partners to really work to make our community an even stronger place for kids and families. And, um, I think the work that we all do as a collective is really rewarding and I think it can also be very, very challenging. And I think that the issues that folks in this room and, um, you all tackle are some of the most challenging issues facing our community. Like I look at Kathy around, you know, your leadership around homeless issues and what, again, what the foundation's doing. And I know this sounds very trite, but I do feel like we are stronger when we do it together. And I really appreciate everyone's willingness to come together over the years and collaborate and for the county's leadership in collaboration, the county's partnership in collaboration, and the work that you all, um, continue to do. So thank you so much and thank you so much to the board. I really, really appreciate it.
Sure, Allison, maybe we should have read this first, but go ahead and let's read this and then we'll talk.
Okay. This is a certificate of recognition. The County of Nevada Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in recognizing and thanking Allison Schwedner for her years of service and leadership dedicated towards improving the lives and families of youth in Truckee Tahoe region. For nearly 20 years, Allison Schwedner has dedicated her life and her career to serving the Truckee Tahoe community through her work with several nonprofits in the area. Most recently, Allison served as the Director of the Community Collaborative Program of the Truckee Tahoe Community Foundation. The collaborative is comprised of 45 health, education, and social service organizations that work together to measure impact, integrate services, advocate and build nonprofit capacities, support youth and families in the region. As the Director of the Collaborative, Allison facilitated countless meetings amongst the participating agencies, giving a voice to the community needs at decision-making tables and driving more resources to the issues. As a result, more members of the Truckee Tahoe community are fed, sheltered, and connected with the help that they need. Allison was instrumental in merging four critical social service organizations to form the Sierra Community House, which today serves a critical access point for a comprehensive set of services for families in need in the Truckee Tahoe region. Allison has led diversity, equity, and inclusion conversations with numerous stakeholders in the region, facilitated suicide prevention trainings, mentored nonprofit professionals, led a countywide mental health needs assessment and supported the Mental Health Fund, which has aligned more than a million dollars to our regional behavioral health roadmap strategy. Therefore, the County of Nevada, the Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in recognizing and thanking Allison Schwedner for over 20 years of service dedicated to bringing critical services to families and youths living here in the Truckee Tahoe region.
Now, is there anybody with the public that would like to come up and make some comments?
Chair Schofield, I just wanted to share our appreciation on behalf of, um, county staff, um, for all the work Allison that you have done. Um, I've had the opportunity personally to work with you, gosh, probably 18 of those 20 years. And I remember even 18 years ago, um, working on a healthy families grant of connecting, um, families that are underserved to health services. Um, and even through your, you know, two decades, um, of work, um, and Health and Human Services, you were really a pioneer of that true collaboration of looking at those networks of local government and nonprofits. And even in Eastern County, the challenge of two counties as well as, um, the network of nonprofits of really, um, having success and, um, bringing important services to families and children. So thank you for all your work and wish you well.
Thank you, Allison. Christian?
Hi, I just, uh, I'm on the Tyler Truckee Community Foundation Board and, you know, people come and go in our lives and in our work. And every now and then, when you hear someone's leaving, you're like, no way. What is going to happen? And you're one of those people, Allison. You have been amazing and you bring the voices to the table that nobody listens to. So thank you for that and for years of service. You are a community jam. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Chair, there are no written or, uh, call-in comments.
Okay. And I remind people to call in early if you wish to make a comment and we'll go ahead and do a photo op, Teen, and then if somebody does call in, in the, in the meantime, we'll, I'll ask afterwards, okay? All right, we'll go down front. Very good. We will move on. And again, I remind people on this next one, uh, if you wish to make a comment and call in, please do it now. And this next one is another very special award. And this is to approve of the award of the Nevada County Youth Leadership Award to Julian Hall. And again, this is a District Five award and I'm going to turn this over to Hardy again.
Yeah, I'm really, this is such an exciting, this is a really cool piece for, um, lifelong family friends, Jason and Drusha and Julian and Sebastian. Sebastian's not here today, but I wanted to honor Julian and Jason and Drusha both for their contributions to our community. Drusha was a planning commissioner and Jason Hall's done a number of different things. And Julian is a, a great special kid, um, straight A-plus student going to Cal Poly, I believe, to be a Mustang, is that right? And, um, took us to the state championship and got MVP. And so I just wanted to highlight that with this Youth Leadership Award. I just want to say thanks and, um, navigating raising children in East County can be a challenge and Jason and Drusha have done it with such grace and done this excellent job with both of their children. And I just want to take the opportunity to point, point that out and also, um, point out this awesome win that the Truckee football team had. And I think Coach, uh, Josh Leibens is in the back there too. Congratulations to you. It must be, uh, feel pretty good. And, uh, you know, it's, it's amazing to see with the youth, the youth commission that we just talked about. And there's so much, um, difficulty and things that we encounter every day and the world encounters every day. And then you see these kids just doing amazing things, right? And the community coming together to support them and doing the next right thing. And, uh, to me, that's what it's all about. I mean, that's really what we're here for. It's what we stand for as a community and it's what we can do to provide traction to these kids because hopefully they're going to be sitting right here at some future date, taking us to places where, you know, we haven't been. So thank you so much for your contributions and I wish you all the best of luck ahead. It's going to be cool to see what you do.
Thank you. So help me out a little bit here. Now I think we have the coach here and we have a video.
We have the coach, we also have a video.
Why don't we have the coach come up, make any comments that he wishes to do and we'll show the video at the same time or afterwards.
First of all, thanks for the invite to be here. Um, it's really cool. It's my first meeting like this, so, um, and I've been a member of this community for 40-plus years. So sadly, this is my first meeting, but, um, getting a broader view of our community's been pretty cool this morning because I get so micro-focused on, on kind of, uh, what we're doing at the high school. So I'm heading into year 28 as a football coach at Truckee High School. And so I've seen a lot of kids come through over the years and a lot of, um, great leaders and in being part of the, the sports atmosphere, I get to witness, um, you know, uh, a four-year transformation from when the kids come into the high school and when they leave. So it's just an honor to be here and to talk about, uh, Julian Hall and what he's meant to, um, not just, uh, the high school, but to the football team. I've known Julian for quite a while. Um, he played football in the Pop Warner system, which I keep a pretty good eye on. And, um, also played with my son Jacob. So I had a little bit of a, a closer relationship than maybe, um, than with some of the other quarterbacks, just being so close, uh, to the team because my son was on it too. So I got to see his transformation. And, and so some of the things that, um, I think made Julian who he is now and, and the great things that he's going to do forward, um, his sophomore year was the COVID shutdown of school and sports and a difficult time for all of us. And we just tried to do our best as coaches and teachers to continue to connect with kids and we did it through computers. Um, and one of the things we did was we created this, uh, these meeting times by position and I would meet with the quarterbacks and, uh, show them drills online and say, you know, go work on these things and film yourself doing it. And, uh, so parents were out filming their kids doing these drills and, and then they had to submit it. And then I would watch it with the kids. And I just remember, um, Julian's attention to detail while we're trying to fix some of this, his natural throwing motions into something new and, and seeing frustrations and stuff, um, but ultimately doing a very good job just online, you know, in a time where you're not connecting with kids physically, it's, um, on computers and, and just having a kid take it serious. And he did. And he made great improvements physically. Um, so by the time he got to his varsity years, he was, he was ready to play the position from a physical standpoint, but that's not really what I'm here to talk about. I'm here to talk about the, the other skills that he had that makes him such a good leader. And to me, um, things that made Julian, he was a captain of our team. He was voted in as a captain by almost every single player. And he had a very good connection with his teammates. And things that made him great that allowed us to have the success that we had last year was, uh, his ability to stay calm and collected when, um, things are going crazy. Um, he spoke when necessary. I think some people, um, almost talk too much. I think some people almost talk too much when they're, maybe like me right now. Leaders, we get a little verbal sometimes and he only spoke when necessary. And so, kids listen to him. And then he was a high performer under pressure. And not everybody can do that either. At the highest moments of his high school career, he was the most calm. And I think that's what ultimately gave our football team the success that we had last year is having somebody like that in a very key position, be a great leader. And so, this is a very good award for him, a very deserving award. And I believe that anybody can lead and, and learn how to lead. But then there's just people that do it naturally and gravitate towards those people without trying a whole lot. And I think Julian's one of those guys that has respect from his peers, just being the guy that he is. And some of the things that I look for in, in, in the leadership, because we have a, you can't just be a captain on our team. You have to have, you have to hit certain requirements and that's GPA. You have to have so many hours of community service. And, you know, they have to hit some fundraising goals and stuff like that too, that you guys don't really want to hear about. But they do have to hit certain requirements to lead the team. And, you know, they have to be unselfish, number one. You have to have a heart to serve to be a leader, which all of you guys here have, which is awesome. And then, so, one of the things that you should know about Julian is even after all this success and graduating and moving to his next steps, he's been working with a quarterback at the Pop Warner system all summer. And so, he's serving the next generation of football players at the same time. So, you have to have that heart to serve, which he has. And then you have to be able to reduce your ego and be willing to listen to others and, and your teammates. And there, there's not a better and more humble person than Julian. You wouldn't know that he was one of our best players on the team by talking to him because he's, he's a humble guy. And so, you got to have that too. And I'm just honored to be here. And as you could see, I'm fairly long-winded. I was given five minutes and I'm probably over that. Julian, congratulations. I know you're going to do great things. You're going to represent our town, you're going to represent our school, our football program. We've already represented well. And I just know that you're going to do great things in the future and we appreciate you here in the Truckee community.
There's a video? Oh, here we go, coming on. Here we go.
I don't want to put Julian on the spot, but I wouldn't mind if Julian could come up to the podium and just tell us in your own words what it was, just tell us what was going through your mind when you guys won that day, what it was like. I know how I feel when the Niners win. And I just know that it's a lot more than that.
I think when we won, it was kind of, one of us, well, one of the most crazy experiences I've had, just because we went into it, we knew that they were going to be really good. And we showed up and we took the lead right away. And then after that, it was like, oh, we're just playing football. I think it was definitely one of the best experiences I could have asked for. And a great way to end my high school career is winning the state championship by a large amount. So, I guess I'm just thankful for the opportunity to be a part of the team and also thankful for the opportunity to receive that award that you guys offered me. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You want to read that?
Sure, I'll read it. The County of Nevada Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in recognizing Julian Hall for standing out as a youth leader on the football field, guiding his team to victory in the Class 3A Nevada State Championship. We also commend Julian for his academic excellence. Julian Hall, a senior at Truckee High School, has proven to be a model leader both on and off the football field. As a quarterback for the Truckee High School Football Team, Julian played a critical role in guiding the team to a 40-13 victory over Slam Academy on November 1st, 2022, to become the Class 3A Nevada State Champions. The game was played at Allegiance Stadium in Las Vegas. And following his outstanding performance, Julian was named Most Valuable Player. Nominated by his teammates, Julian also served as the team captain for the season. Off the field, Julian is also an exemplary student, as evidenced by his 4.2 GPA and being named All-American Football Scholar. Julian's exceptional academic performance directly contributed to the Truckee High School Football Team winning the Academic State Championship in Nevada 3A Football with the combined 3.62 GPA. Julian is a three-time recipient of the OKG Award, our kind of guy, which is awarded to the individual who takes it from the class to the grass. This fall, Julian will be a freshman at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, and he has been accepted into the prestigious School of Architecture and Environmental Design. The County of Nevada Board of Supervisors commends Julian Hall for his excellence in leadership and sportsmanship, most notably in guiding the Truckee High School Football Team to victory in the state championship game. We wish him success on his journey ahead.
Thank you, Hardy. And I just, just a few comments from the rest of the board. I think I kind, I echo what Hardy says in seeing our youth today. As he mentioned, we just approved our Youth Commission at our last meeting. So impressed with the young folks that are coming forward and will be a part of our future and will be our future. And Julian, you're, you're obviously part of it. And as I listen to what the coach says and what the qualifications are to be a leader and to be the captain of your team, any of us could look at that and say, hey, that's the same type of qualifications we need to have as, as leaders here at the county level or anywhere. So, I think Julian, that whether it be football or whatever else you decide to go into, I might point out Cal Poly has one of the few fair management programs that you can go into. I think you're going to be very, very successful. So, I say congratulations to you. Sue, comments?
No, I would just say congratulations. I think that's exciting. I love that our kind of guy award. What, that says a lot about who you are and to get it three times. Cal Poly, great school, architecture, if that's where you're really going into. I know what a challenge that is. It's a long program. So, I have a friend down there, you're going to love it. It's exciting. You'll love Cal Poly altogether. And mom and dad, thank you. Thank you. You know, it takes a mom and dad to give that support, let them have their wings and fly. So, you're a big part of that. Julian, you always make sure you give them a big hug. Right on, congrats.
Thank you.
Well, yes, congratulations. You know, there's a huge sense of pride in bringing home a state championship to your town and to our county. And I hope, you, you might not understand the whole impact of that, but the, what it does for the community, especially in the world that we live in today, where there's people who are divided on issues, bringing that to your community is huge and people will talk about it forever. So, congratulations. You know, like I said, when we approved the Youth Commission, if these are our youth today, we have a very hopeful future. So, keep up the good work. We'll be following you and I will look to see your name on a design of a building someday. So, congratulations.
Congratulations on all your achievements, you and your team, which I know is often a team effort. And I look forward to seeing what you do at the School of Architecture and Environmental Design. You have a great future ahead of you. Best of luck.
Okay, is there any public comment on Julian? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Chair Schofield, there are no callers and no written comment.
Very good. And I think what we'll do is a photo op down front and I would ask Julian, it's up to you, of course, but your mom and dad, we'd like to have, and also your coach, join us in a picture. You can tell them no if you want to. We have a scheduled item at 10:45, so we're going to have to move around a little bit. Would anyone like to take a break? I think we got plenty of time. Okay. Well, then, we can move on, I believe. We'll move on to our department head matters. And the first one is a informational presentation on improvements to the Herschdale Road at its approach to the Tahoe Pyramid Trail. And this is Heba or Trish? Oh, Heba, I'm sorry. Let me see up there. Yeah, this is item number 31, I'm sorry. And again, if anybody wishes to make comments on this item, please call in at this point and we'll catch you at the end, but just hold on to it. Heba, please.
Honorable Board Members, good morning. Heba Gindi, Public Works Director. And I will be presenting informational items on improvements on Herschdale Road near its easterly end as it approaches the Tahoe Pyramid Trail. There has been a number of meetings with the adjacent community, including one held on June 22nd where, when the improvements were discussed. The project area is to the east of the Herschdale Bridges with the Truckee River and the Union Pacific Railroad. The improvements covers some maintenance items, including removal of vegetations on the side of the roads, maintenance to the roadway surface, as well as improvements to the signage as it relates to information signs directing the area visitors to the trail, as well as where parking would be permitted or prohibited. I'm not sure if this has a pointer, I guess not. So, on the westerly end of the work area, to the west of Hinton Road, parking will be allowed on both sides of the road, about 150 feet, which would allow for six vehicles parking on each side of the road. And it will clearly show that parking is prohibited at the turnaround at Hinton Road and to the east of Hinton Road. We're also appreciative of our work with the Tahoe Pyramid Trail Group. Thank you, Sam and Mike, who will be supplying us with the trail-related signage, the trail parking to the west of Hinton, as well as the information signs directing, directing visitors to the trail and at the turnaround to inform auto drivers that they need to turn around and not proceed beyond Hinton Road. We're also going to be installing two boulearts at the easterly end of the road, where currently there is a private gate to only permit cyclists and pedestrians beyond that point. The black and orange dots shown, these are some boulders on the side of the road that we will either remove to allow for parking or move away from the pavement section. There is also an abandoned county gate that we will be removing and reusing at another location. Funding for these improvements were approved by the board on August 8th. We're using $20,000 of unexpended ARPA funds. Early in September, we will be finalizing this concept plan after we hear the community comments and comments from the board today. And we will coordinate with the abutting residents on the implementation in September. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Heba. Board members, Hardy, going to start with you again.
I don't have any questions. I'm familiar with this and Heba, thanks so much for bringing this forward. I think it's a wise use of resources and trying to solve some of the challenges there. It's not, it's not the end of what we're doing there. We have the bridge projects that the board's already approved, the Recreation Master Plan with the meeting coming up on the 31st with the community is going to happen. So, it's a step in the right direction. I, I'm really happy with the work. I'm also happy with the community and the meetings we've had. We had one yesterday with the primary landowner there and Heba worked, and Trisha worked very closely with those landowners to make it acceptable to everybody in the room. So, I'm happy about that. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Hardy. Sue?
I don't have any comments at this time.
Lisa? Hardy, no other comments? Are there any public comments at this time, questions?
Chair Schofield, for the record, my name is Mark Cameron. I'm the Executive Director of the Tahoe Pyramid Trail. I'm joined by Sam Limerick. He's our GIS guy. He's also on our board. He's a GIS mapper extraordinaire. We couldn't do what we do without him. But I want, just want to thank you for allocating the funds at the last, at the August 8th meeting for these improvements. We appreciate that it supports the users of the Tahoe Pyramid Trail. But I also want to thank you for going out and working with the public too, because we don't want to appear as, as the trail to be somebody that's, that's not wanting to work with everyone. You know, this is, this is a great thing for the community. We want everyone to be able to access the trail, but we also want the public to be heard. So, we appreciate that. So, we look forward to many years of collaboration with Nevada County. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Sam Limerick. There we go, there we go, the green light, the green light. Record, my name is Sam. Record, my name is Sam Limerick. I'm a board member of the Tahoe Pyramid Trail, and I'm the mapmaker. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment on this. There's been some confusion about the parking situation out there, and this plan really goes a long way to clearing it out. Thank you very much for that. And we really appreciate the ability to use the county's right-of-way along the Herschdale Road there for our trail. We think it's a really beautiful trail, and we're really happy to see more and more people using it. So, thank you very much. And we really support this plan to improve the end of Herschdale Road and to add more parking and signage. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Any other? Madam Clerk?
Chair Schofield, we did receive a written public comment on this. If it's a relatively short email, would you like me to read it into the record?
Go right ahead.
Okay, this is from Jessica Darkenwald. It reads, "Hello, county supervisors. My name is Jessica Darkenwald, and I am gratefully a resident of Herschdale. Hardy, I appreciate you taking time to come out to our community and discuss your plans for Herschdale Road. I am sure from attending the meeting, you can see that many of our neighbors disagree on various topics. With the public improvement plans, I would like to urge you to expedite determining the high-water mark. There is a psychological concept of certainty, and currently, there is not certainty with regard to the high-water mark. When emotions are high without certainty, people feel unsafe and sometimes act unsafely. That is how the human brain works. If we can get a neutral party to determine with a level of certainty what the high-water mark is, I believe our beautiful and small community will feel safer and more secure. Thank you for your time."
Thank you, Dean.
And at this moment, we do not have any additional callers or written comments.
Very good. I will close the public comment portion then. And I will entertain a motion to accept this presentation. So moved. Motion Supervisor Bullock.
Second.
Second Supervisor Hook. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, board. So our next item is the Office of Emergency Services. Director Craig Griesbach. Resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the County of Nevada, North Star Community Services District, Town of Truckee, Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation, Truckee Fire Protection District, and County of Placer regarding the North Tahoe Truckee Biomass Task Force and authorizing the Director of Emergency Services to execute the memorandum of understanding. Craig?
Good morning, Chair Schofield. Members of the board, Craig Griesbach, Director of Emergency Services for Nevada County. For a decade, your board has prioritized emergency preparedness initiatives and programs. We have several large-scale fuel mitigation projects over the next decade or so that will greatly help mitigate the threat of wildfire, while also helping address forest health and climate-related issues. The questions remain, what do we do with all this vegetation on our landscape? How do we remove fuels from our landscape in an economical way that doesn't add to climate-related issues? How do we leverage these fuels for energy production, workforce development, and reducing emissions overall? These questions and many others, we hope to work towards addressing with the format of the, or formation of the North Tahoe Truckee Biomass Task Force. This is a regional problem, as these issues don't have barriers or boundaries with cities, towns, or counties, thus needing a collaborative effort to address it. I would now like to introduce Jared Deck, who's an Environmental Engineering Manager with Placer County Department of Public Works, who is a close partner and leading much of these efforts. Jared was nice enough to join us while he is out of the office, so I really, really appreciate him joining us and contributing to this presentation. Jared?
All right, good morning, board. Just let me know if you guys can hear me.
We can hear.
Sounds good. All right, so as Craig noted, my name is Jared Deck. I'm the Program Manager for Placer County Department of Public Works, Environmental Engineering Division. And I guess you appreciate your board taking the time to hear the item before you. Also, I apologize for not being in person today. I just underwent hip surgery and just kind of a bit mobile-read at the moment. As Craig noted, one of the public agency's main priorities is protection of its communities. With catastrophic wildfire not abiding by jurisdictional boundaries, a regional solution is vital in mitigating major wildfires within the Tahoe region. Working together with North Tahoe Truckee Biomass Task Force, some private agencies willing to step up and move forward in finding solutions within this region. Craig noted the main agencies involved with this. I'll just reiterate those guys again. Placer County, Town of Truckee, North Star Community Service District, County of Nevada, Truckee Fire Protection District, and the Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation. Within that group, we're really trying to establish some major goals. We're trying to step back and look at a regional approach to biomass. Understanding how much annual year of biomass is sustainable in a region, how that biomass is for establishing multiple biomass facilities, and then working together to establish a regional biomass distribution network for those facilities between the partners. Within this model, each agency is still working on their individual projects, but as a region, we are pushing a collective vision forward, which will assist in some other aspects as well, which can leverage regional resources and grants, create educational outreach, share costs of some of these regional stuff, studies. Could you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So within joint efforts, there's a larger benefit to the region. We recently completed integrated infrastructure and fuel supply study. It showed improved the need for multiple local biomass outlets in the region to assist with fuel disposal. This regional document showed a unified plan in North Tahoe area, and was the catalyst in getting $4 million in grants for two of the agency's projects. So really showing that regional unification can help in some of these grant allocation processes, instead of just having each agency compete against each other. Last thing I'd like to emphasize before I turn it back over to Craig is this agreement is not binding for any financial commitments, and will allow each agency to pick which task it would like to support. But it does establish a collective goal and an easier path to combine funds across multiple agencies for some of the beneficial items I just provided to you guys. With that, I will turn it back over to Craig, and if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to stay on and answer those.
All right, with that, staff's recommendation is to approve the attached resolution and execute this MOU with the aforementioned partners, really establishing the North Tahoe Truckee Biomass Task Force. And that concludes our presentation. We'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Craig. Hardy, what's wrong with you?
Thank you. This is really exciting to hear about. It's the only way to go, I think, with biomass and biomass facilities, is to take a regional approach. Just one clarification, I must not have been listening clearly, but you mentioned $4 million. Is there some money that's already come into this regional association? My assumption from the reading all this and hearing you was that this is a very beginning. Does the MOUs have been established that you can work together? But is there money that's already come in?
Super Rosa Hall, we are early on in the stages, although we've been meeting for several months now, and there's a lot of things happening currently. Jared, I'll let you speak to that a little bit more if you could.
Yep. So the $4 million was a $2 million grant for two of the agencies. So Placer County's Cabin Creek Project received it, and the North Star Community Service District received $2 million for their project as well. So that's not directly related to the MOU and the group itself, but it was part of a larger regional project of establishing some of those facilities and getting overall funding for that.
Great. So it just goes to show how much can be done if you start working together on this, I think. So, sounds really good. Thanks.
Thanks, Craig. I appreciate bringing it forward. Just a couple of questions. I was hoping maybe you could highlight the NCSD project, and then just really briefly, and then the Cabin Creek project that are kind of a little bit more tangible, maybe projects that have moved along and are now kind of being shepherded by this group.
Yeah, Super Rosa Bullock, there's a bunch of different projects, many on the early phases. Cabin Creek is definitely one of those that Jared could probably speak to better than I. There's some efforts and discussions in Truckee for a smaller biomass facility. We are looking into different solutions potentially for the new La Barra Meadows property that we purchased this last year. So there's a lot of different things going on with our partners, working with our ski resorts as well, because there's some interest there to mitigate a lot of the fuels and projects that they have over the next decade as well. But Jared, can you speak a little bit more to Cabin Creek and any of the other projects?
Yep, so I'll start with the North Star project. So it's run by them. It's a different aspect of biomass. So they're using biomass to heat, so supplementing their boilers. Instead of using natural gas, they're looking to use biomass to actually supply that heat and then heat their facilities. And so that project's moving along. They're, I believe, just finished their environmental review process. They're still moving forward with that, looking for additional funding to help kind of cover that capital cost. For the Placer County project, it is currently proposed as a biomass-to-energy facility. So a 2-megawatt facility that uses a synthetic gas process, which pretty much converts that biomass into a synthetic gas and puts it into engines to combust and create electricity from. We also are working on site to investigate new mechanisms for disposal biomass. So we got received a $500,000 grant from the Partner of Conservation to investigate biomass to hydrogen, so creating hydrogen for supply for the fuel industry and for vehicles, and then also biomass to bio-oil. Bio-oil would be a product that could possibly be used in asphalt or also in burners as well and heating applications. And then just kind of looking at a general process of that biomass energy. So we're still working through that process and understanding what our best path is for.
Yeah, thank you for highlighting that. And the one other project you mentioned, Wisewood is, has this really, it's a manufacturer. They've gotten really aggressive trying to find grants, and there's some really cool grants out there from the state. The East County, the application of that type of system in East County isn't the best, so I think there's some great opportunity in West County, different facilities, both heating them and generating power. So Craig was working on that as well. So anyway, I'm really excited about where this is all headed, and thanks for the support of that.
Thanks, Hardy. Lisa? Sue?
No, I know, I always like.
Hang on a second. I just want to remind people, if they want to call in, please do it right now as we're finishing up here, and then we'll get to the public comment. I apologize, Sue, go ahead.
No apologies. This is great. I love, again, working together to come and solve a solution. I always wondered, though, we've been here and done this. We closed them, and now we're moving ahead again in the set direction. So I am interested in watching how this process works. I mean, the cogent, I love to see something as we move forward to help with our food waste. You know, is there some way to incorporate that with our green waste? I think there's so much more that we could do. Because like I said, we've been there and did it, and then they closed it, and now we start over because we're in this situation. So I am really excited to see how this group works, because they are creative and open-minded and really looking for big solutions.
Yes, Super Rosa Hall, it's interesting you mentioned that, because I think biomass could be a potential vehicle for a lot of these issues, from workforce development to climate resiliency goals, to fleet electrification, to food waste. Hopefully, we can combine all those together. I mean, it's a lofty goal, but hopefully, we can get there, and I think it makes sense.
I just mentioned one more thing, Sue, to your point. The biomass of the past, these big plants where they have all these big tipping, you know, all this green waste going to one central location, it's like becoming decentralized. And so the Wisewood project is really small. It's like a very small footprint, and it takes smaller scale to be more localized, which I think is a difference, because I know, from my experience, you know, we've been talking about biomass, quote-unquote, for like 20 years. And, you know, it just never, you can never feel like you're getting on the step. But some of the things that I'm hearing from this group and also from the manufacturer's side are pretty darn promising.
Yeah, thank you, Craig. And as Hardy and I sit on the Northern Sierra Air Quality District, which is comprised of Nevada County, Sierra County, and Plumas County, and we have issues with a large biomass plant up there, and that's what Hardy's saying, is the bigger ones are struggling. And I think what we're looking at here is more of what I think the future is going to be. So, no, this is really great, great to see. So is there any public comments or questions on this? All right, C and N, Dean?
Chair Schofield, there are no callers or written comment.
Very good. Then I will close the public comment portion of this, and I will entertain a motion if there's no other comments from the board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Supervisor Hall, Second Supervisor Bullock. Madam Clerk?
District Four?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes. Very good, thank you. And with that, we have about four minutes before our next scheduled item. So we'll take a four-minute break at this time. Of August 22nd, 2023, in our beautiful town of Truckee. This next item is a public hearing to amend the consolidated user fee schedule for county departments as adopted June 20th, 2023 by Resolution 23-288 to reflect the following changes. Exhibit E, Community Development Agency, Exhibit K, Public Health Vital Records, et cetera, et cetera. Allison Lehman, will you take it over, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Chair, members of the board. We have Barry Anderson, Analyst with the CEO's Office, as well as our Chief of School Officer, Martin Pult, who will present the item today. And I'd like to introduce Barry. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Allison. Chair Schofield, members of the board, my name is Barry Anderson. I'm a management analyst in the CEO's Office and I have a brief presentation for you today, followed with an opportunity for questions and comment. So some background. On June 20th of 2023, as part of the 2324 Board Budget Hearing, your board adopted the consolidated user fee schedule for all county departments. That, following the adoption of that schedule, we realized that there were a relatively small number of fees that required revision. Those revisions can be broadly categorized into three areas. We have some statutory updates that were not captured in the June resolution. We identified some issues with rounding on the Consumer Price Index adjustment that was applied to certain fees and an issue between the way that was done and the way the Community Development Agency permitting system applies fees. So some rounding issues. And then also there were certain, a handful of fees that were erroneously omitted from that schedule. So we would like to correct that issue now. Included in the resolution and the materials with this resolution is a document noted as Attachment A that enumerates each of the fees that are proposed to be revised, along with a description of the reason for the change for each fee. And lastly, wanted to mention that the proposed revisions and the situations necessitating these revisions have been reviewed by the User Fee Review Group. Again, we call that the UFERG for short. And that is composed of staff from the Auditor Controller's Office, County Council's Office, and the County Executive Office. So the first category of fees that need to be revised are in the statutory, statutory updates category. So these fees are set by state or federal government. And while Resolution 23-288, that June adoption of the consolidated schedule did authorize the UFERG to simply make administrative adjustments. We figured since we're coming for you today, we would include those in the Attachment A. So those are presented here and in the materials associated with the resolution. And those fees specifically are in the Community Development Agency Ag Commissioner and the Public Health Vital Records fees. The other category, the second category of fees, as discussed in my sort of introduction, is the CPI adjustment and some issues with the rounding. So a little background there. In the interest of streamlining the process of updating fees for countywide, the board has previously approved an automatic adjustment based on Consumer Price Index for two years, excuse me, for two years following the time study established baseline fees where it's appropriate to do so. The Community Development Agency fees were subject to that CPI adjustment as part of Resolution 23-288. And in the preparation of the fee schedule, that CPI adjustment was applied to the fee as a whole. However, as mentioned in the public fee hearing, some of those fees are a formula. It can consist of multiple hours for a task, a combination of hourly rates for multiple departments, and sometimes a complex formula that also involves square footage. And so the issue that we found is that when we applied the CPI to the total fee, it caused a rounding issue with the cella system, which actually the CPI adjustment should have been applied to the base components of those fees. So for instance, if you had a two-hour fee in planning and the CPI should have been applied to each hour of that fee and not the combined two-hour fee. And so you will see in Exhibit A, a number of these fees are one penny different. However, there are some that are slightly more complicated. So that's the nature of those. Those, the CPI should have been applied to the component pieces of those fees. And we're proposing to correct that situation. And then the third category of changes that we request to make are a handful of fees which were, as I mentioned, sort of erroneously omitted from the consolidated fee schedule in both CDA and Public Health. So in the CDA, we have three fees specifically. One environmental health fee, which was intended to have its baseline increased from a half an hour to one whole hour. And that brings it in line with other similar fees for land use. There's one specific planning fee, which did not have the CPI applied, in which should have. And then in the area of CDA administration, they charge sort of an overhead fee, cost recovery fee. CPI was applied to that fee at the sort of the base. However, in the areas of cannabis compliance and code compliance, your board in 2022 directed an adjustment at six, sorry, seven and six percent respectively for those programs. And so the administrative overhead rate should have been adjusted for those specific areas accordingly. And instead of the sort of baseline standard CPI. And then lastly, in the area of public health, we have an immunizations fee schedule. And this is for, so public health provides immunizations to members of the public who wish to receive them. They receive or they recover costs based on the actual cost of those immunizations. During the COVID-19 pandemic, public health staff was redirected to pandemic activities and was unable to maintain the updates to that fee schedule. And as such, these fees fell off the radar of the User Fee Review Group. And we omitted them or neglected to include them in the consolidated fee schedule. So we would like to bring them in with this action today. And with that, I would like to open for any questions.
Thank you, Barry. And I would remind folks that if anyone watching online wishes to call in for questions or comments, please do it now. You'll be on hold for a while, but it will work timely-wise. I open this up for questions. And the only comment I have right off the bat is when they say there's a fee for everything in government, this certainly points it out. Lisa, would you like to start?
Sure. I don't have any questions, but I just want to share my appreciation for bringing this forward. I know that this is routine and pretty much there's nothing drastic in here. But I think that the transparency of bringing this forward into a public hearing is really important. So thank you. I know there's a lot of work that goes into preparing all of this information for us and it's much appreciated.
Thank you.
No, I think Lisa covered that, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I have a funny, opposite reaction. So I'm curious how this happened, number one. It's two different departments. And so I don't think I need the whole story, but I think I'm disappointed that this happened and that it has to come back to us, especially these one-cent fees. Not sure that's, you know, great use of our time unless this is required. I think the immunization fees are looking pretty much quite a bit bigger. And that's a whole, was a whole issue that got neglected because of COVID, so that, that makes sense to me. But I hope we fixed going forward how this happened. And yeah, I'm not sure. We need to see one-cent revisions. And I guess, are we, do we owe people money now going back between June and now? Or are we pretty much clear in terms of these changes?
So the fees, the resolution that was adopted on June 20th just took effect. And so those fees will be charged as, you know, as was adopted. This is more an attempt to correct and bring these fees in line with the way that they should be. So 20 days from, assuming your board adopts the resolution, we will have a slightly corrected-
Okay, so there's no impacts, in between impacts, okay.
That's my understanding.
Great, thank you.
I don't have any questions. Thanks for bringing it forward. I was just going to mention, having gone through the budget subcommittee, you know, the pay-for-use concept is really keeping the fund balances in each one of the accounts that serves whatever need that is. And it's, you know, kind of enterprise-level funding of those departments. And so it's kind of a weird concept, just from the highest level, thinking about how do we pay for all the things the county provides? And I really had a great appreciation for that, going through the budget ad hoc with you and seeing the fund balances come and go as our programs change and what we, the service offering we provide. But this goes a long way and I really believe in keeping up on the fees because sometimes I don't think our, the CPI increase necessarily matches what goes on and what it costs us. And as a state expands program offerings that are, become the responsibility of the county, we have to keep pace with that. And so thanks for bringing it forward. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Barry. It's like, did your committee actually look at every one of these?
Yes, yeah, they do.
Wow. This seems much more detailed than what we actually saw even in the budget subcommittee. This is, and if you look at it, it does amount to, I think, a fairly substantial amount of dollars overall. And you're saying this is what we approved on June 20th?
It's a revision to what was approved on June 20th for a specific subset of the fees. The consolidated fee schedule covered every single county department. The resolution that was approved in June covered every single fee collected by the county. This is specific to the fees that we identified, which fell into the, those sort of three categories described at the beginning. Again, statutory updates that took effect post-June 20, those rounding issues which we uncovered, which is the majority of the fees, and then those, those changes that we just missed the first time around.
Well, and you know, there's so many here that honestly, I really just kind of skimmed this. So, so I'm just looking at environmental health for, or planning, land use planning. There seem to be some fairly substantial increases in there. So were they basically approved in, on June 20th and then rounded or whatever else needed to be done?
That's correct. The nature of those fees have not changed. As I mentioned, without getting too far into the weeds, we applied the CPI to, you know, if you have a planning fee that is composed of, or any fee that's composed of, say, an hour of planning time, an hour of code time and an hour of building time. We applied, that's, the CPI should have been applied to each of those base hours as opposed to the combined aggregate. So if, you know, it just, that was my mistake in preparing that file. And so we caught it and are trying to correct it.
Okay, okay. And then Heidi kind of mentioned this too, the immunization ones. I'm looking at what I would think is fairly a standard fee. Polio, shingles, that type of thing. Was there no charge previous to this?
We neglected to include these, those fees in the resolution that you adopted on June 20th.
Oh, but they had been in there previously.
Correct, yes.
Very good.
Apologies, that wasn't clear. Yeah, those fees have been in place in the past. We neglected to include them, which is why in that attachment A, it shows that, you know, the existing fee is zero.
So Barry, I apologize for not getting to you earlier on this one.
No problem.
Thank you, though.
Chair Schofield, could I have just a point of clarification?
Yes, you may.
Supervisor Hall asked about why we would bring this to, if there's a one-cent increase and any kind of increase at all mandates by law a public hearing. So, and again, it's why the User Fee Group tried to build in the CPI index increase so that you don't have quite so many of these coming to the board. But this is a regular item that would come before the board and is subject to public hearing.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, thank you, Kit. And thank you to the User Fee Committee. They obviously had to put a lot of work into this, so tell them it's greatly appreciated. With that, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none here on the chambers, Madam Clerk, is there any call in?
Chair, there are no callers or written comment.
Very good. At this time, we will close the public comment portion of this meeting. And unless there are further discussion, we will bring it back and I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Supervisor Swarthout, second Supervisor Hook, Madam Clerk.
District four.
Yes.
District three.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District five.
Yes.
District two.
Yes. Thank you, board. Okay. Moving on then, what we have is what we've all been waiting for. County Executive Officer Allison Lehman, the acceptance of the 2023 Board of Objectives Midyear Report. Allison?
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. Each year, the board supervisors adopt their policy objectives, their priorities for the calendar year. And we have an opportunity to reflect on those policy objectives and provide you an update. I'd like to introduce Caleb Dartik, the Assistant CEO of Nevada County. He'll provide that report to you today. Thank you.
Caleb?
Good morning. Thank you so much, Chair Schofield, members of the board, for this opportunity to present the midyear report. I always feel humbled in this role because I'm simply the messenger of the work of probably well over 800 people who are contributing to the core services and operations of this county every single day. And then the large team that has been working very hard to advance the board priorities and board objectives that you set each year. We do have staff on hand in the room as well as online to answer questions on the various objectives as we go through the report. Okay. So just for those following at home, this is a quarterly report that we hope is helpful to you. It is posted online in an interactive way as well as in a PDF to make it easy for the community to follow and to allow for some transparency and communication. This chart is very familiar to you. This is the process of developing and acting on the board's annual objectives. This report is a midyear report. We do these reports on a calendar year, unlike most of the county reports, which are on a fiscal year. So this covers January through June. The board identified eight objectives for 2023 and we will review each of these briefly. The first one is fiscal stability and core services. I will read the reports, the summary points that staff have provided. So this one's, despite some uncertainty regarding the larger economy as well as with the state budget, property tax revenues and major county fund balances remain healthy. Fiscal staff remain vigilant in monitoring finances, but the county is well positioned to weather challenges that may be on the horizon. Moving to emergency preparedness, let me first start by saluting our first responders and our EOC team who coordinated last week's response to the highway fire as well as the Reader Fire. It seems like a long time ago, a snowpocalypse, but if you recall, our EOC was open for 17 days in support of the January through March back-to-back winter storms. These events brought emergency proclamations, followed by state and federal aid to public and private residents to support what will be a multi-year recovery effort. The OES team is really to be congratulated for their grant writing that, which has been quite successful. Some of the awards include $950,000 from Cal Fire for the Winter Storm Hazardous Vegetation Cleanup Project, $256,000 from FEMA for the Pandrosa West Grass Valley Extension Project, $214,000 from Sierra Nevada Conservancy for the South Yuba Rim Hazardous Fuel Reduction Project, $250,000 Community Wildfire Defense Grant Funding for the Nevada County Community Wildlife Protection Plan Update. The OS, OES team is also busy with implementing these grants. Quite a great deal of project work goes into this. So in particular, want to point out the partnership with the Fire Safe Council of Nevada County. Together, they've completed work on two access and functional needs, defensible space projects totaling $1.3 million. He's implemented free defensible space around the homes of 68 vulnerable residents and verified the eligibility of 464 additional residents who will receive residence during the next phase of the project. And as we know, this work clearing defensible space is quite expensive and often physically beyond what many of our elderly residents can take on. So very important project. In terms of planning, the OAS team is contracted with consultants to lead three strategic planning efforts. The Nevada County Community Wildlife Protection Plan Update, the evacuation study, and the local hazard mitigation plan update. Together, these three plans constitute the county's roadmap to resilience. These planning efforts involve working closely with residents and community members to define the hazards we face, that priorities are identified collaboratively, and that the resulting recommendations are actionable. Moving to economic development, and Kimberly Parker is here, can answer many of these questions. She and her colleagues have been working hands-on with our business community. She's connected over 83 businesses to a variety of resources, improved communication outreach with a new webpage, a monthly newsletter, and two business readiness assessment tools. Working with the Sierra Business Council team, they've assisted 360 businesses and provided 634 hours of technical assistance consultation. The county secured a $270,000 award from the Department of Cannabis Control Retail Access Grant Program to support eligible farmers. The Go Nevada County website team continues to focus on highlighting local businesses and cultural and recreational amenities to residents and tourists. The North San Juan Fire Suppression Project is progressing on schedule. And overall, the staff continue to coordinate with local developers to understand barriers and help identify solutions or opportunities for projects such as the Penn Valley Community Center, In Concert Sierra, Habitat for Humanity, Donner Summit, and more. We want them to know we are available to assist wherever possible. Broadband. The broadband group continues its great work. It's really important for us to understand the status of, of access to broadband in our community. So working together, they've collected 600, no, 764 local residents have responded to the state's digital equity survey. This data will help identify the state priority areas for broadband funding. The team supported two local internet service providers' applications for state-level California Advanced Services Fund Grants that it funded would support internet projects in unserved areas of the county and worked with Golden State Connect Authority toward a final high-level design for their broadband expansion project in Nevada County. Housing. Cassians Field. I think many of us were there for the ribbon cutting was completed in January. The project has 51 units and serves households with 60% or less of the area median income. This is affordable housing serving Nevada County's workforce. Pacific Crest Commons is a collaborative effort to secure financing for the California Highway Patrol surplus site in Truckee. That project will incorporate 10 behavioral health department supportive housing units into the project. Round four, No Place Like Home funding has been awarded. The project has also secured $2 million in local soft financing, received $5 million in excess sites local government matching program funding, and a $2.2 million award from the Infill Infrastructure Grant Program for development costs. This project continues through the entitlement process, and we will apply for federal tax credits in August for awards to be announced in November. Tremendous example of the type of interagency collaboration that's required to fund these type of projects. Similarly, Lone Oak Two, a developer has been selected. The Pacific Company is in partnership with the Regional Housing Authority. The project is in the final planning stage. Additional funding is being provided through the counties. There really should be a law against acronyms that are more than seven, eight, nine long, but CDBG, DR, MHP Grant, I don't know what that stands for. And $365,000 and a home program income of $1 million. The project will apply for federal tax credits in August for awards to be announced in November. Planning for Ranch House continues and will provide an additional six units of permanent supportive housing. The Board approved that project to go to bid for construction in May, and site prep and demo are scheduled to begin in early October. And finally, the Cameo Drive Apartments is a 47-unit project located in South Nevada County near Lake of the Pines that will serve households with 60% or area or less area median income for Nevada County. The project is entering the plan review process with the Planning Department. Homelessness. Empire. A homelessness story in many ways echoes the housing story. I'll point to a few items here. The Empire Mine Courtyard, purchased with Home Key Funds, has completed renovations of the original motel portion of the project. The project has 19 units of affordable, permanent housing completed and currently houses 20 people, including two children. The county purchased the Sutton Way property for a day center and navigation center. The property is adjacent into Brunswick Commons. escrow closed September of 2022, and staff are seeking grant funds to rehab the building. The enhanced care management team is currently housed in the building with limited hours. The campaign to end veterans homelessness continues to make progress. Currently, seven veterans are homeless and functional zero requires that three veterans or less are homeless at any time. Since January, the number of homeless veterans has decreased from 23 to seven. And finally, rental assistance through CDBG coronavirus funding served 37 households, 27 of which had pay or quit or eviction notices. The assistance prevented those households from entering homelessness. Recreation. The community is engaged in the Recreation and Resiliency Master Plan. We've received over 1,800 surveys capturing respondents' thoughts on recreation needs. A tremendous response. With our heavy snowfall, the, the South Yuba River Public Safety Cohort addressed what became very dangerous river conditions this spring. They had a campaign called Stay Out, Stay Alive. It included a press conference and river rescue demonstration ahead of the Memorial Day weekend. That the coverage received regional attention and viral resonance over a million shares. Astounding. CDA and IGS developed the new Nevada County Trail Finder app showcasing countywide trails. The app launched during celebration of Trails Month. The library expanded its recreation collection this winter, providing snowshoes and other equipment for recreation, which came in handy during this winter's power outages and extreme snowfall. Nevada County Probation Office launched its first ever free skateboarding clinic. We want to thank Carolyn Mueller and for putting that together and the response, in response to requests from students from Seven Hills. The Board awarded funds to 17 outdoor visitor safety grant fund projects and locally awarded funds for Hurstdale Road and Donner Summit. Looking ahead, the rec team submitted over $2 million in grants. Our fingers are crossed on the outcome of those submissions. And finally, to climate resilience, this is our newest board objective. Established in February, the first six months have been focused on establishing structure, seeking funding, cultivating partnerships, and advancing and aligning climate-related work across county departments. Highlights include securing a Civic Spark Fellow, furthering community choice aggregation, and advancements in organic waste disposal and zero emission vehicle infrastructure planning. You will be hearing a detailed update from the Climate Objective staff this afternoon. And with that, I'd like to open it up to any questions or comments.
Thank you, Caleb. And again, I'd like to remind those folks online that if they have questions or comments, please call in at this time. Sue, you want to start this?
Sure. Thank you, Caleb. Great presentation. I'm always amazed at really, I don't think people realize all the things that are happening inside the county on a regular basis. And I feel like we're staying, we're on task and that excites me. I mean, especially when you look at the physical thing. We've had some ups and downs, and I want to commend our staff for really keeping that in, in tow where we need to be in case we see a big fallout that comes. I think that's amazing. I think that between our auditor and Cesar and Tax Clever, all of them are doing just a fabulous job. And thank you to Martin for leading the way on all that. I think it's really important. The broadband thing is very exciting, and we've had a good team on that. I'm excited where that might go, especially with this new Golden State connects. I think there's a lot of opportunity that we're going to see that's going to help our, our folks in the community as well as is what the struggle that we're having with the, the loss of hard-lined landlines, you know, and we're doing a, we're doing some study on that as well. And people are phoning in because those are issues that we see in a rural community, especially when it comes to emergency. I mean, I could go on and on. Our, our OES team, what, I mean, we pulled this thing together and it was the first opportunity for heart, our animal, a rescue team to have to mobilize during the Washington Fire. Just is amazing to see how that collaboration works and they pull together. So when we get to look at this, what's happening over the year span from our workshop to now, I'm ever impressed. The housing, I'm looking forward to see where that goes. We have those two big projects looking for tax. We'll see that happen in November for, especially I've got a senior apartment building in Penn Valley. It'll be the second phase of that, really excited. And excited to see where this goes up here with the High Patrol office in Truckee. That's going to be a real benefit to the area. So I feel like there's a lot of really exciting, good stuff going on, and the update's always just really good to hear. And, and Mike, I commend all the staff that works. Like you said, there's probably 800 different folks that contribute to this, and it's a lot of work to put it together. So I'm just pleased with where we're headed.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Yes, sir.
So I would echo everything that Sue said. I think it's, it's important to know where you are, and the presentation that you made gave us a really good idea of where we are mid-year with all the projects that have been directed. But the importance is also knowing where you're going. So keep up the good work. And, you know, there's so many things that we did that weren't on here, such as the heart program, such as the youth commission that was formed. So in addition to all of this work that is being done by county staff, there's a lot, there's a lot more. So, you know, thanks for the presentation, and I look forward to seeing the end of the year doing the comparison.
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor. You will get one more quarterly report that will be delivered to you in, after September. And then we will do another presentation, certainly update at your board workshop in January.
All righty.
Thank you. These are great to get. And yeah, commend everyone for the great work that they continue to do. I think a couple highlights, I have a couple of questions, actually, and then I'll go into my highlights. But on the emergency response, is Craig still here? I, a question on the, I know that we did a hot wash, a really great report after the winter snowmageddon that we have had twice. And the idea was to be better prepared coming forward to learn the lessons that we learned the hard way. And I'm wondering if that's incorporated in this? And if not, there were, it was a really good report with very clear suggestions about what we could try to do better. And I'd love to see the follow-up to that, sort of before the winter hits. Like, okay, here's what we identified, and here's where we've gotten on that. So maybe a comment to take back.
Thank you. Absolutely. The hot washes and after-action briefings are always prepared and happy to share them. I'm not sure, Sarah, if we have OES staff online. But if they are, please, I can't, I just can't tell who's here, but I know a lot of people are listening.
But Chair Schofield and Supervisor Hall, that's something that we could bring back to a board as a staff report in the future.
Yeah, just, I think it'd be great to, it just was such a great report. It was so, was exactly what we needed to, to, to figure out how to, how to be better prepared next time. No, you know, no dissing to the staff at all. We, we were just slammed with all kinds of unexpected issues. But the after this, after the hot wash report did just such a good job of identifying them. I just want to keep seeing where we're going on those. And then a second comment on that, I wasn't aware that we had done that much work on individual residences with the the funds to help people who were low-income or seniors. And actually, I'd love to get more detail on that, maybe per district or region. Just, it's very helpful because when people ask, I haven't been able to say, yes, we're doing this because I wasn't aware. So would love to have a little more detail on that. And then those are all the questions I had. I, I think what really stands out too are the survey responses we got and the outreach we're doing really so much better than we have in the past. And kudos to all the folks who are doing all that outreach. It's just critical that we get that kind of input from the community, and we're doing much better on that. I, I love that. And then I, I just have a thought that I think we should look at maybe in January. These are so great to show us what we've done and where we've succeeded. But to take off of Supervisor Swarthout's point, would be interesting to like, on each one of these to sort of have a reach goal. But maybe in January for next year, we want to have a reach goal where we're not going to see a green arrow. Yes, we did it all. It's great. It's fantastic. But sort of here's some of the harder stuff we're trying to get at that might take more time, but let's keep track of what those are and how we're getting towards them. I feel like that's, you know, one of the things we do that's special in Nevada County is we're very innovative. We've done really good, unusual work. And I think the only way we keep doing that is by having these sort of reach goals to keep challenging us. So a thought for our January workshop, but overall just a great report, very, you know, commendation to all of the staff who've worked so hard and, and really made great achievements this last quarter. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor. And it is really gratifying to see not only that these after-action reports get conducted, but that they're implemented. And so for those of us who've gone through the OES now for a few years, we can just, we're all seeing just the rapidness that it gels, that even with new people coming in, the systems are in place and working really well. The team is incredibly collaborative with other partners, and the communication is, is, is excellent. So we're really proud of what's been building there. And of course, it can only improve.
But Supervisor Hall, we hear your suggestion, which I think is a good one. And in January, we will bring back a component of the board priorities and the report in terms of developing reach goals or milestones that we could work towards as well as report out on.
All righty.
Thanks, Caleb. Yeah, that's a great report. I always enjoy this. I, I love seeing information assembled this way. It makes sense to me, and it, I really like it. I think each, everybody kind of touched on some of the comments, and particularly Supervisor Hall, I just, I had a couple of questions and comments related to what she was describing. But I would like to just kind of congratulate the executive staff on synthesizing all the things that come out of the workshop, because when you leave the workshop, it's like three days of really intense prioritization and, you know, financial elements and all that. And then it gets put into this, your workflow program, and that takes incredible leadership, right, to get all of those people and those 800 people that you described functioning on one plan, so to speak. So just, um, just a sincere thank you to the executive staff for making all that happen throughout the year. The form of the report I like, I think it could use a refresh on some of the formatting, and I'll just describe a little bit, similar to Supervisor Hall. There's a lot of green arrows. And then on page 16 for broadband was the best example of what and now I lost it, but there's things on there that are dated with closing dates at the end of 2022. And so I'm wondering for clarity, if we can roll things off, and I recognize that some things that were identified as priorities in 2022 probably roll forward with deliverables in '23 and '24. But maybe there's a different way to to indicate that so that instead of, you know, you've got I'm getting there. The actual report? Yep. In the actual report. So you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight initiatives, six of which have green arrows, but the ending date is 12/31/22, 22/22, 22, 22, 22. And then there's one that's 23. So I just argue that for relevance, it may be better to see the ones that are current, and then maybe a progress status bar on the other ones, just so we can focus on the things that haven't been done, because that's, I think, really for everybody's sake, understanding what we're, you know, where we are in, in the completion. we are in the completion of that. Anyway, does that make sense?
Yes, it does. That's really helpful feedback. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And then this is a little bit off topic, but, but again, a little bit related to just the general workflow that we conducted the county. Even in my short tenure here as a, as a board member, I've seen the amount of work conducted by staff is growing. It's going up and you, the, the reports reflect that. And then just the amount of time that we spend describing different initiatives. I think it's great. I think it's serving the people and there's a lot of demands on our time and resources as a county organization. I just wanted to note for my colleagues on the board, we may want to describe the staffing required, or you may want to give us metrics on staffing requirements for the initiatives that are here so that we can understand how to staff properly. I recognize it's costly. Government has costs associated with it, legacy costs and, and pensions and all of those things. I just want to bring up the fact that the reason we're doing this great work is because of the staff that we hire and retain and attract and pay for and staff around. And I see people working really hard. I'd like to continue that conversation in the strategic workshop, understanding, are we staffed properly? Are people getting the support they need? Can we continue to work at this level? Because the level I see is definitely increased just in my tenure here on the board. And I want to make sure it's sustainable. That's it for me. Great. Well done.
Yeah. I want to echo Hardy too, and congratulate the executive team for the work that they do in putting this together. Not only putting it together and working on it once January happens, but getting ready for the next January, which is well in progress already. So it is very impressive. And, and just a point of what Lisa was saying too, is that even though we've got these priorities and that's what's in these, these reports, there are many things that are still go on that may no longer be called a priority. Cannabis, for instance, cannabis is far from being totally resolved and not something we have to worry about any further. And there's a lot of work, a lot of work that's going into that particular program. And I don't know, I think most of you know it now, Lisa and I are on ad hoc committee for that cannabis updating that we're going to be, that's going to be coming to you soon. Once we get to it, huh Lisa? I think the other thing that I wanted to point out too is Martin and Barry here. When we look at financial stability and core services, the one priority area that it impacts every one of these priorities is our financial stability. And I know, and Sarah, at this point too, being part of this team, I know that how much work goes into that. And again, that planning process as we're coming forward to a, a new calendar year for us anyways, and a new planning year. I know the work that goes into it. And we often are asked that, you know, are you able to sustain this program? We ask that program. These are the folks that answer it. So I want to say thank you to all of you who put your time and effort into this. And Caleb, thank you to the rest of the team for all the work that they do. So thank you. With that, is there anybody here that would like to make a comment? Tom, please come up and make a comment. Anybody else? And again, if you were going to call in on this, please make that call now if you haven't already.
My name is Tom Durkin. I'm the creative director of the Sierra Regional Place to Go Project. And I was curious about the landlord liaison program, who exactly it's serving. I talked to a lot of landlords who used to rent to homeless people and they don't anymore because of crime, violence and property damage. And is the landlord liaison program working with them? I was kind of curious, but I hadn't heard about that program before. So I want to know a little bit more about that.
Ryan, would you like to comment on that? Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair members of the board. The landlord liaison program is designed precisely to address the challenges that Mr. Durkin has raised with both trying to recruit landlords to be willing to rent to people that we're working with, as well as make them whole if there are any issues or damages or things like that. And recognizing that it's easier to rent to somebody who doesn't have those issues. And so we have to play a more robust role with that. So that's something that works in tandem with our team with Army Housing plays a role in that program and definitely something that we want to continue to build and enhance. And I'm happy to provide more information about it offline.
Is there a financial incentive?
Yes, there can be funding available for helping with the, sorry, if there's any damages or deposits and things like that. And then often, we're also playing a role in connecting with the programs that can support the actual rent of the individuals staying in the housing. So it works in tandem with a lot of our other programs. And really through the coordination that Brendan Phillips and teams and, and our teams do with all the service providers. And as people come into the homeless system, they go into coordinated entry and a team jumps in and works and connects them either with landlord liaison program or other resources to support their needs.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ryan. And you get more information on that too, Tom. Is there any other public comment? Madam Clerk?
Chair Schofield, there are no callers or written comment.
Okay. Then let's see what I'm supposed to do with this one, you guys. Sorry. Well, I will entertain a motion. What are we accepting?
So move to accept the report.
Who said that?
I did.
Okay. And I'll second.
Motion Supervisor Hall, seconded by Supervisor Swarthout to accept the midterm report. Madam Clerk?
District four.
District four, yes.
District three.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District five.
Yes.
District two.
Yes. Okay. And with all this consternation we had about not having enough time to get everything in, here we are with a half hour before noon. So Allison, is there anything else?
So we have a staff recommendation and that is to move up an afternoon item. But I'd like to check in with Supervisor Bullock to better understand if he has public who are planning to attend. And that would be item 34, where staff would provide a climate resilience objective, objective presentation update.
I don't specifically know anybody. I'm sure everybody's interested, but I don't, I don't, I don't know at this point.
So staff would recommend for the board to hear that item before lunch.
Okay, then we will do. We'll proceed to that. And then what we will do at 1:30, we will ask the clerk if there is any calls that have come in on this and we can respond to it. So we will go to the next item, number 34, which is the climate resilience objective presentation update. And who is presenting this? Ariel.
Nothing likes bringing it on you guys.
I think I'm good. Thank you, though. It was struggling to connect. Good. Well, good morning. I was going to say good afternoon, but good morning, Chair Schofield and Honorable Members of the Board. My name is Ariel Lovett and I serve as your project administrator in the county executive office. I'm here with my colleague Jeff Thorsby, who serves as a senior management analyst in your board's office, to present an update on your newest objective, which is the climate resilience objective. As quick background, a reminder that your board adopted this objective through discussion at the January workshop and then formally adopted at your February meeting. Oh, I need to be forwarding the slides so we're all on the same page. To safeguard Nevada County's economic durability, environmental integrity and public health and safety by preparing for adapting to and mitigating changing climate conditions in a way that reflects our rural quality of life. With that, we proposed you adopted five initiatives for Nevada County to make progress this year and to position the county for important resources and funding while moving forward with meaningful progress in the meantime. And I want to emphasize the direction that we had and the understanding at that board workshop, that underpinning this whole objective is the understanding that this isn't all, this isn't brand new work. This is really the strategic alignment in good part of a lot of the existing work done by your multiple county departments. And aligning that way positions our county to be successful and secure funding. So these are the five proposed initiatives. To protect and harden critical infrastructure, to enhance carbon storage on natural and working lands, to enhance collaboration, to increase climate capacity and achieve our climate resilience goals with our community partners and within our organization, to pursue funding and advocacy opportunities and to align the strategies in a coordinated strategic plan. And you've already seen this today, so I won't go through this slide again, but just a reminder. So in alignment with, as Caleb presented, the, the strategic intention with which you adopt these objectives, this objective was adopted in February. So this is really just a six month as we're coming back and wanted to share with you the structure, progress, as well as proposed budget as we establish this objective.
Well, good morning, Jeff Thorsby, your senior management analyst. And pleasure to be here with you. So I'm sorry, we're kind of tag teaming on this presentation. So as right here, so what I'd like to do real quick is just kind of give some orientation for, for you as well as the members of the public, kind of how we have approached tackling this objective. As you know, this is a brand new objective. We're approximately about six months in now, so about half a year, well, a little bit more than half a year, but moving forward. And so the first component is we have the chair establish an ad hoc subcommittee that includes Supervisor Bullock and Supervisor Hall. And so we've set up meetings with them every other month to really make sure that we are keeping pace in staying in check with your board. A part of our initial process when we first launched this objective was also to develop a charter. That's an internal document that really outlines not only our goals in terms of a, of a work team, but articulates our structure, which I'm going to talk a little bit right now. It is a helpful guiding document, if you will. We actually use these charters in a lot of different special projects. And so moving forward from that ad hoc subcommittee, you have your, really your core working team helping to support. And really our goal is to really identify the, and work on this objective for your year one. And that includes obviously Ariel and myself, but includes our public information officer, other members of the CEO's office, and our grants coordinator, and also consultancy from our business council. And then additionally, from that further, we also have really what we refer to as our climate resilience objective work group. And this is your internal team. One of the things that we mentioned at your board workshop is that the unique aspect of when we think about climate resilience is it really touches every aspect of our organization. And so bringing in folks from all across and really connecting those dots. And this is the list of all the different folks and part of our team members. We meet with them once a month. However, something that we've become, we're really cognizant of, I think actually maybe some, some of the points that Supervisor Bullock mentioned earlier is that it does take staff time to do all this. And so it's really important for us as we work with all of our department heads. You can see there's a lot of, a lot of high, high octane staffing in there, if you will. And so what we do is we work with, when we focus, we work with the ad hoc subcommittee, we identify kind of a working agenda on exactly what we want to be focused on. And then we work and make sure we get those key members at that meeting. And then we allow the other, and when we send out the agenda, the other department heads, if you will, can really self-select if it's value added for them in terms of that meeting. We want to make sure that we're value added to their capacity and not just straining their capacity. But it is really, I just want to highlight how important it is because of all the work and we're about to outline a number of the different kind of progress we're at. And you will see really all the work across the organization that's happening. And actually, what I'm going to go ahead and do here actually is talk a little bit and kind of launch into our progress. And what we'll do is we'll talk about a progress update under each initiative, under the five initiative. And then we'll move forward into presenting essentially kind of our, our proposed budget allocation for your feedback. So starting off, first of all, we have our first initiative, which is to protect and harden critical infrastructure. I'm not going to go into too much detail, but I will, one of the things we want to mention is our community choice aggregation. This is something that your board actually already heard last month. So I'm not going to go into detail about that. But that was a component that really impacts our critical infrastructure and how we receive energy. Number two is actually a really exciting project that we teamed up under the home hardening warm handoff. So what that means is we partnered, pardon me, we partnered with our energy action plan community work group to, and with our social services department on to connect folks with opportunities for home hardening. Home efficiency is one of the key ways to decrease energy consumption. And it's a really huge area. And we actually partnered and one of the things we'll talk a little bit later is about funding and some of the grant opportunities. But we were partnering with the town of Truckee, as well as with the different cities of Grass Valley, Nevada City on a grant opportunity that could further advance that. But we're excited with the, this partnership is a really warm handoff with their energy action plan work group and project go to existing resources to help those most vulnerable. That actually also includes not only property owners, but also renters as well. So renters can receive assistance to increase the efficiency of their homes, whether that's windows or other efficiency means. Also, I wanted to mention our zero emission vehicle county fleet project. So Nevada County Transit Services has begun in processing, transitioning its medium and heavy duty bus fleet to zero emission vehicles with the purchase of two 35 foot low floor battery electric transit buses, as well as related charging equipment. The completion of the project is estimated in March 2025. You may ask, well, it's 2023, why is that taking so long? And that's because of the initial phase delayed due to electrical equipment panel and the delay of the equipment. So we're working as fast as we can. But we think that's an exciting project in terms of advancing our solar project. And then I do just want to mention our client, our county solar project, we feel like it's important. This is efforts that your board made years past, that was really paying dividends. I'm not going to go into detail about that. And of course, our broadband work group and working on how to get folks access to broadband. I'm going to go and pass it over. We're going to do a tag team with Ariel.
Now I actually have my notes and I, and I can wing it, but I put a lot of thought in what I want to share with you. So I just want to make sure to hit those high points and emphasize the great work of our staff. But so our next initiative that you had, that we had direction to move forward on was enhancing the resilience of and potential for carbon storage and sequestration on natural and working lands through management and restoration. And I know that sounds like a mouthful, but really understanding that in our community, in our county, how we manage our lands has multiple benefits for protecting our health and safety, preserving our rural quality of life. And also it is a way that we can demonstrate our climate action objectives. So this is really about, in practice, what this looks like is leveraging sustainable recreation. It is about increasing our forest health to reduce the greenhouse gases and sequester carbon. It's about exploring biomass and biochar solutions, which you heard about a little earlier. It's about our organic waste. So some of this also is how we approach our compliance with state regulations and SP 1383. And it's also about exploring strategies to support our local farmers and ranchers and promote local food production. So we actually have some cool progress on this one. We're part of the Climate Transformation Alliance, which is a Truckee, an eastern county based partnership led by the TDPUD and the town and the airport district, but is really formed into a pretty robust collaborative that we're glad to be a part of. And through that, we're part of a natural and working lands group that is developing a project to bring to the state to measure the greenhouse gas emission reduction potential through the management of natural and working lands. Again, now I really appreciate it, I think, the direction from this board. And I really remember the words of Supervisor Hook that said this, this objective needs to work in a way that is in alignment with our rural quality of life and our priorities. And this is a good example of that of sharing with the state. Like this is a huge way that we have to sequester carbon in a way that supports sequester carbon in a way that supports our health and safety and may look a little different than an urban solution. Also, SP 1383, that's a requirement by the state in 2022 that every jurisdiction provides organic waste collection. And I am sure you've heard of this already. Our project, our program manager, David Garcia, has convened a working group and then also recently developed a partnership with Zero Food Print to provide compost procurement that will meet or exceed our 2023 SP 1383 procurement guidelines. So a real shout out to him because that's been a really difficult regulation to comply with. And his creativity and dedication have really brought that forward. So it will meet or exceed our procurement target, which is 910.5 tons of compost. And then also on this one, we want to highlight the, the work of your board with the Outdoor Visitor Safety Fund Grants. And again, a lot of times with, with this climate objective, we really are looking at co-benefits. And where we're really, you know, feeding two birds with one crumb. So through moving forward with our recreation objective grants, we are also, two of those grants totaling $99,000, supported work in conservation work in Uar Valley and Van Norden Meadow. And again, so this is preserving the rural quality of life, it's supporting the recreation and objectives of our community as well as creating opportunity for carbon storage. Back to you, Jeff.
So the next initiative, which is enhanced collaboration to increase community capacity and achieve chemicals. I've recently mentioned the Energy Action Plan, and so we continue to meet with the Energy Action Plan Community Work Group. They've been meeting since 2019, so furthering their initiatives. I am excited to also report, you know, county staff has met with them, including planning, building, economic development, and really helped provide input to them on how we can advance the county's energy action plan. Also, staff is supporting the Nevada City Rotary and developing sustainable models for plastic bag recycling program. So the Nevada City Rotary reached out to the county to understand how we may be able to help and support them. Again, that's to increase their capacity and the community's capacity. Further, Ariel mentioned the CTA, the Climate Transformation Alliance. I won't go into further detail, but we're continuing to participate with them in their monthly meetings and partnering in different projects, as she just mentioned, on the, the natural working lands. And then recently, for Earth the Outreach, we hosted a booth at the Nevada City Earth Day, sharing information, soliciting community input on climate's resilience priorities, which also included opportunities that our department's already offering folks in terms of energy efficiency. And then just providing orientation that the county is promoting climate resiliency. And then also, I just wanted to also give a shout out to Supervisor Bullock and Supervisor Hall with help and support with playing the Sustainability Summit. This is a regional event to really increase coordination regionally on climate resiliency and conservation. We have, we've secured a pretty exciting structured panel. You should all have received to save the date. And we are excited, we will be having Deputy, Natural Resources Agency Deputy Secretary Amanda Hansen there to speak as our keynote speaker, as well as having the deputy treasurer, a number of the other folks, including Chairman Smokey from the Washoe Tribe. So a lot of exciting work going into collaboration.
The fourth initiative was to pursue funding and advocacy opportunities. And of course, you know, I'm sure you'll remember that this was a key motivation or an additional motivation in adopting this objective is the opportunities that we have given the state and federal funding climate right now to prioritize climate resilience. So just giving a quick update of some of the work, and this has been an important focus in these first six months, is really recognizing, and we'll get to the budget, but that the initial investment that, that the board is making is really focused on leveraging other funding. So staff have partnered to submit concept proposals to the Air Quality Management District to support vegetation management. And a second proposal, both which were invited for full proposals to support a county e-bike fleet. We also, Jeff mentioned just yesterday, press submit on a grant to the Department of Energy for an energy efficiency and conservation block grant. That's in partnership with the town of Truckee. And just again, so many departments are part of this. Want to thank our building department and CDA as well as HHSA for partnering with us moving that forward that would really support individuals and families with home weatherization. So again, it's really assisting low to middle income folks to make their homes both safer and more comfortable while additionally supporting energy efficiency. We also are partners in an EPA Climate Pollution Reduction Grant Program. We don't receive funding through that, but technical assistance. And really, the goal there is there are, there's significant funding being released in the fall towards projects. So being part of this collaborative helps us to set the stage and queue up our projects to be ready for that competitive funding to be able to secure moving forward. We also, and again aligned with the previous objective, a lot of these are related, be partnered with our, and you recall probably approving this grant on consent last week, but partnered with our RCD, our Resource Conservation District to submit a sustainable agricultural land conservation planning grant. And that's really exciting because there are four key deliverables, and one is an agricultural economic development strategy. There's land use policy development to support agriculture. And then looking at climate resiliency strategy with the natural and working lands focus, as well as education and awareness for farmers and ranchers about sustainability and also about succession planning. So when we talk about sustainability, it's really in a, in a comprehensive way. Also, a habitat conservation grant submitted in partnership with Circle to support recreation amenities and sensitive habitat at Van Norden Meadow, where we'll, there's an optional tour later today. And then we also submitted a PG&E resilience grant to fund a study on economic impact and avoid loss from climate events through the formation of a resilience district and in the upper headwaters district. And that's really just grants that are outside, where we're working to not be repetitious. So I want to give a huge shout out, you heard earlier from our OES department, who submitted about 15 million total in grant funding. And all of those obviously have a nexus with climate resilience, as well as they funded three planning grants, six shaded field break grants, and vegetation abatement grants.
And then your last initiative, which is to align strategies and coordinated strategic plans. So I want to talk a little bit about this, and I think actually at the last presentation, to your point Supervisor Bullock, in terms of what are our reach goals? And what are the goals of this objective? And I think ultimately, you know, where we see our initial goal is to make sure that the county is developing a climate action or adaptation or both plan moving forward. I think that is ultimately, and that's something we articulated at your board workshop back in January, as an important mechanism to unlock funding and then to have strategies to deal with extreme weather and the likes. So this year one, really, of course, we're really focused on just trying to get ourselves organized. And so as you see in that, that in the slide, you know, our initial work plan and charter was developed. And I've kind of talked about our structure in terms of our internal work group, our ad hoc. I do want to highlight something that is also exciting, which is our staff initiative. We had staff reach out when they, after your board workshop and said, hey, we're interested in this climate resiliency topic. And so staff reached out to us and referred to a project called Climate Resilience Micro Teams. And what this is, is a staff led initiative, which is really to identify, if you will, climate resilient like-minded folks who are interested in this outside of their general normal work, to help promote and look at different innovations in their own department to advance resiliency. And this can be very kind of low hanging fruit. And so they met with our internal team and presented this and were really well organized and also really enthusiastic and really kind of identify like a six month plan to begin to think about how our departments could take small steps in terms of, you know, whether that's to, you know, mitigate the use of plastic water bottles or other components that they can do. So you've enthused, you've enthused our staff, and so we're excited to incorporate that. But I think going, going back, we're also still in a phase of really continuing to do research. Like I mentioned, in terms of thinking about climate action plan and climate adaptation plan, where those fit with the California Air Resources Board? Or they fit with the Office of Planning and Research and what funding mechanisms they do unlock and looking at that. And as Ariel mentioned, a lot of those grants, particularly the Adaptation Plan Grant, which we weren't necessarily successful in grabbing, but looking at some other opportunities to help fund those. And I think that's what we're going to talk about in just this next slide here in terms of a proposal. But how do we match our resources to existing sources to do that? But I wanted to just also highlight that orange box there below, which is true, being strategic and non-duplicative. Your departments are working on a lot of different planning efforts, including your Recreation Resilience Plan, your Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, your evacuation plan, your Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and with other existing plans, including the Zero Emission Vehicle and Transit Plan. So we are really mindful of that, and I think moving forward, we want to make sure that we're being strategic and standing on the shoulders of those plans and not being duplicative. And also being mindful, and I think we've heard from your board previously, that we don't want a plan that's just going to sit on a shelf, and we want a plan that has a plan of action and that can be a living document. And that is really important to us and to be really mindful of our capacity. So I'll go ahead and move over and shift it back over. Oh, the last component, what I wanted to highlight, and I apologize, which was changing the color of this slides, you'll see yellow. And I think we wanted to highlight that that outlines some of the initial work we've done in the last six months. You'll see heavily, you know, applying for all these grants obviously has happened in our structuring. But you can also see a lot of the work that really relates to climate resilience objective is already being done in your departments. And that's what's keyed us is making sure we're connecting those dots under umbrella and how that impacts and influences our work.
Thanks, Jeff. So moving forward, at the, at the board workshop in January, board directed staff to develop a $200,000 budget to address these five initiatives. And as we established this new objective, we have, we're bringing you today a preliminary budget, really with the focus of using these resources to leverage other funding. So we're actively seeking grant funding for all of these items, and we anticipate as they, that as we secure funding, these allocations between these buckets might change. And so today, we're really seeking your guidance on this budget, sharing with you and noting that formal approval, though, will come on September 12th, when our fiscal team, Martin and Barry, will be bringing you an update on your American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funding. And budget will be established at that time. And of course, implementation of this budget will follow our normal procurement policies, including any contracts over 50,000 being brought to your board. So this budget framework is really in six buckets to further this objective and address the five initiatives. And I'll just provide, Jeff and I will provide a really brief background on each of the items. So as we've been talking about, having an approved climate action plan or climate adaptation plan is successful to an effective adaptation and mitigation strategy, and specifically to unlock certain types of funding. So again, funding identified here is intended to leverage grant funding to further these plans. The 65,000 identified is not what's going to fund the plan. I failed to mention when I was recapping the many grants that we're working on, the Regional Resilience Planning Grant that you approved on consent this morning, which will be a key element of that would be furthering this planning work in partnership with the Climate Transformation Alliance and the Sierra Business Council. The second bucket is around community coordination and capacity. And so as part of the board's initiative to increase collaboration to achieve climate related goals, we're proposing 40,000 for community coordination and capacity, which may support contracting for a Western County Climate Coalition to support community engagement and education, including the internal strategies and capacity such as Kermit that Jeff mentioned, as well as build capacity in, in our partner organizations to achieve climate objectives. And then we have also identified the third bucket, community contracts to implement initiatives. These modest resources to take immediate action to further climate related priorities through contracts with community partners, such as the Clean Tahoe contract that will be later on your agenda for your approval today. And then Jeffrey, you want to hit the second three?
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry about the rubber band presentation style. The other one is Civic Spark Fellowship Grant. So we're very excited. CivicWell, formerly the Local Government Commission, provides resources to local governments and counties in terms of work related to climate resilience. And so they have a CivicWell, pardon me, Civic Spark Fellowship Program, which basically provides a full-time staff for about 11 months. We were able successfully, we applied, we were able to get a Civic Spark Fellow who will be starting in October, should your board approve. But that requires a match of about 31,000, and then you'll see the little additional cost in terms of for a computer, make sure that we have a staff. But that's a, we're really excited that we can help leverage that bucket. So really thinking about that staffing piece. The fifth bucket, there's education advocacy, and so making sure that we are carving some funds out to make sure that we're, whether that is, you know, CivicWell Adaptation Forum or Policy Forum through CivicWell or other means, and making sure that there are resources available to learn and to educate. And then last but not least, the Annual Sustainability Summit, we're estimating, you know, a little more than 5,000. That, again, that's an estimate. So these are the general buckets that we are proposing for your board's consideration. Again, action would be not today, but we want to make sure that we are getting your direction moving forward. And so really, our recommendation is to really just hear from you. Are we moving in the right direction? And of course, answer any questions and to get your feedback on those budget allocations. And then, of course, we continue to work with the ad hoc subcommittee and our objective members, continue to identify climate action adaptation plan moving forward and a framework for that. Then, of course, for the five initiatives. So with that, we'll go ahead and stop and entertain any questions and available for you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Thank you, thank you, Ariel. And our ad hoc committee, Heidi and Hardy, thank you for the work you've put into this. And Heidi, I think I'll start it with you.
Thank you, both of you. Excellent presentations. A lot of material to cover. You did it well. And I just want to say to my colleagues on the board that, you know, I think, I think Hardy and I were pretty tough on this group. You know, this was a lot to pull together to get our arms around. We were starting with an initiative and then nothing else, but here's all the stuff out there that's happening. There's all these things we could be doing. How do we put that into a framework that makes sense? How do we create a plan? Plus, we kept telling them, it can't just be a plan that sits on a shelf. There have to be projects and we have to collaborate with all the people who are already doing all this. And we have to capture all the work that's already happening in the department. So it was a big, a tall order, and I feel like you've done a really good job. I am personally, I think, just really hyper focused on, on really getting things done. And I, and this just is a great framework for moving forward. I'm really happy with it. Would be curious to hear your input and see if there's anything we need to change or do differently. But this was a lot of work and I'm really pleased with how it came out.
Yeah, I'd echo the same comments. It was kind of a blank slate when we first started. So it was really cool to see this framework taking place and all the, I like how you put it down. There's, there's just a lot of content and information and cool things to do. I accidentally tuned into one of the, I think, I don't know the name for it, but the employee, the staff member side of the meeting. Kermit, thank you. Is that what? Yeah, yeah, the objective group. So I thought it was a meeting I was supposed to be in, so I sat in the back and listened. But it was really inspirational to hear people that are taking time out of their busy days to try and address some of these resiliency and climate change objectives that the board has created, right? So it's completely outside that people's everyday work that they're doing. That really was great to see. And then I wanted to mention too, on the Outdoor Visitor Safety Fund, just because we're, Supervisor Hook and I are pretty connected to that, and Erica's in the room and she's doing a lot of work there too. But I can see a noticeable difference in the grant funding that we've allocated here in East County. There's less trash, there's less, there's more restrooms and there's more signage, and there's less interface problems that we see. So that we, we, I just wanted to let everybody know we're making a difference. And I think that's so important when you deal with climate change, these big global problems, like the old adage, like think locally. I think we're doing it. So it's like, it's nice to see that done, that actually taking place. So kudos to you for bringing all those things forward. Excellent job. Just a couple of quick questions. The, the budget, I'm, had we not established a budget at all yet, or was it 200,000 based on the strategic workshop? And then we have to put it into the next budget?
So that, from my understanding, the 200,000 was for this budget. And so for this year.
This year. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. So we'll have to, will the board have another opportunity, obviously, next year, starting with the strategic workshop to talk about expansion of that? But that would be the starting place for changing the allocation. Okay, perfect.
That's correct. We received the policy traction in January, and then we would work with the budget subcommittee to align those, the policy direction with the upcoming fiscal year budget. But anytime throughout the year, it's at the board's discretion if you'd like to revisit and do a budget modification.
Okay, yeah, that's great. Thanks. I was just curious. I was just curious on the Climate Action Adaptation Plan, there was a yellow flag in the report about the, was that correct, there was a yellow flag in the progress report?
Yeah, so we initially applied for the Climate Adaptation Planning Grant, and we were not successful, but we are working with Sierra Business Council and folks to re, really kind of repackage that grant and modify it, and actually, that's where, you know, we mentioned the Climate Adaptation Forum, we were actually able to meet with both representatives from OPR to talk about, you know, why that was the case, and opportunities to further, you know, make, improve that, but that's why that was a yellow.
Okay, and then one final comment. Ariel was telling me about all the reports and plans and studies that are required for our county to move forward, and I just maybe some clarification, I know you're, you're always trying to find a way to get something done versus write a plan that Jeff talked about, you know, we don't want to sit on the shelf, but maybe some clarity, those plans and studies are really requisite for our future funding, for big funding opportunities, is that right?
Yeah, I think I'm understanding your question. I think I'm understanding the question, but as clarifying our intentionality around how we're leveraging the existing work that's being done, and much of which is related, so Craig, I think, may have mentioned earlier, we're right in the middle of our Community Wildfire Protection Plan, our Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, there's also an evacuation study. Erica, of course, is leading the Recreation and Resiliency Master Plan, Kimberly's leading our Economic Development Action Plan. We also have all kind of the standard plans that underpin our general plan and our safety plan elements, so what we really want to be intentional about is not going out and creating a brand-new plan that doesn't articulate intelligently with these plans. So Jeff and I also had the opportunity at the Adaptation Forum to meet with some consultants just to learn a little bit more about this process, so, and ask, you know, how can we be efficient, both with our resources and our staff time and our community's time, when we move forward with developing a climate either, so there's, not to get too in the weeds, but we can have a Climate Action Plan, a Climate Adaptation Plan, both of which are called CAPS, or a CAAP, which would be a Climate Adaptation and Action Plan, but, you know, how do we, so we're really focused on, and will be in the next few weeks, bringing all of our department heads, relevant plan leaders together to identify these existing plans and work, ensure that the plan that we develop is leveraging those, aligned with those, and we're doing so in the most efficient way.
And I just want to add one point that staff spoke to in their presentation, but the town of Truckee is really leading the way in this space, and we're learning a lot from the work that they're doing. I also want to recognize Nevada City, their council has already made this a council priority, so as we look at our plans of action, we're also looking at a regional approach as well.
Awesome, thank you.
So, thank you for the presentation. For me, this is an area that I have not worked a lot in, so I'm really happy to get the education, and this particular presentation was very educational as far as what resiliency really means. It's more, it's much more than just hardening your home against fire, and how many different departments are involved, and how it all ties together, I think, was great. I'm good with the $200,000 budget that's been proposed, and I think as we move forward, if there's a necessity for more, I think that's important to bring that back so that the work gets continued, and we don't, we don't do it because we don't have the money to do it, because I think it's very important, and also really pleased to know that you're creating a plan that's not going to sit on a shelf. I've worked on many plans over the years that have sat on a shelf, great intentions, you know, really great plans, but then nobody had the wherewithal to be able to implement them, so I'm just, I'm really impressed with how you guys have done this, and then looking forward to the implementation plans that are moving, you know, going, going to follow, so good work, and I look forward to hopefully coming up to Truckee for the Sustainability Conference that you're going to be doing, and then as we move forward, hearing more information at the board meetings about it.
It's amazing to see what you've accomplished already in this short period of time. You know, I was speculative of this a little bit, concerned about how it affects rural communities and economics, really, it can, I wanted, I was afraid we'd go in a direction that might get out of control, and you've been so, well, one, watching this and how it's coming together, and how that broader picture really helps our community, and where it goes, I'm very excited. I feel like you have gone above what I thought would get accomplished in a year, very amazing, so looking forward to where it goes. Again, I don't want to see something sit on a shelf, I want to see it get implemented, and I think there's a lot of exciting stuff to come in the next year, so good on you all.
Same here. I think that anytime we create a new priority, I don't know that we, any of us know what that's really going to look like, even when you set something like homelessness or ROES priorities, you just don't know until the plan is created, and then you start to see those steps that are happening, and you guys and your team have put all that work into it. I don't have anything to add to it at this point. I think, just think you've done a great job, and I appreciate the work going into it. It's, it's, it's something you see, and we obviously have an issue with climate resiliency, but what to do about it is not an easy answer, and I think that's where you guys are headed. And what is the date of that conference again? This is Sustainability Summit?
It's September 27th.
September 27th, okay, very good. Thank you again, excellent report, rubber band style.
Chair Schofield, just before closing remarks, they mentioned staff's involvement, and it was really energizing to see staff recognizing this as a board priority, reaching out to the CEO's office and saying, hey, how can we help? How can we get involved? And I specifically want to call out and provide recognition to Jaclyn Piergaye in Social Services, as well as Lynde Valente in Probation, who really led that employee effort.
Thank you, Allison. Yeah, that's really true. Also, the fact that so many of the departments already have programs going, and you're recognizing all that, and you're bringing them all together, I, and what was the term you used, I wanted to be sure you were on their shoulders?
Oh, yeah, stay on the shoulders, and really maybe stay on the shoulders of our giant leaders here in the county.
Yeah, right. For our audience in the online, I have no idea what they said either. All right, is there any public comment on this, questions or comments? And again, if anybody is going to call in, please do that at this point, because I know there's going to be a heavy public comment here. Seeing none? Are we close to 40 seconds?
I think we're good.
Very good, team.
There are no callers or written comments.
Okay, then at this time, I will bring it back and entertain a motion to accept the presentation.
So moved.
This is one I can do by voice, I believe.
Second.
Motion Supervisor Hall, Second Supervisor Bolick, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you so very much. And at this point, we are going to adjourn for lunch, and we will reconvene at 1:30.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events, we want to have a broad spectrum, we want to be prepared for anything, but really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise, to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home, and really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into, under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home, so when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed, and it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery, that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything, I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything, it could be a backpack, it could be a suitcase, it's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed, that's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out, so you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as in evacuating.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes, I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia, I work in the 211 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7, so what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers, it can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares, we're all local community members, we all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise, and first, the house phone rang, picked up my phone, it was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready, they were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk, so on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching the fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there, and it had gas tanks and propane tanks, and I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air, and I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames, and I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours, so it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire, and they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance, to have that group of people that they were going to call, and that, she saved my life that day, so absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five, the idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece, and it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning, this is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that, we are telling people that it's time to go, there is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number, it'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services, it's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call, and so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order, not a warning, but an order.
My day started, routine patrol, came in, and I was notified.
My day started, routine patrol came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very, you know, clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate. We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council, or 2-1-1. We're here to support you.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada, a new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season, you're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and knowing your zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you'll know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise, to prepare residents, to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer. And that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries, to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as in evacuating.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 2-1-1 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house. And we're watching the fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening. And I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance, to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that, she saved my life that day. So absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece. And it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started, routine patrol came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very, you know, clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 2-1-1. We're here to support you.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and knowing your zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them and it makes those tools more powerful because you'll know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready Set Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents, to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer and that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything, I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 2-1-1 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is. You know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in Paradise. And first the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house and we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening. And I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that she saved my life that day. So absolutely having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready Set Go is that go piece. And it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones Fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 2-1-1. We're here to support you. We're here to support you.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada, a new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to "go" at a moment's notice. This fire season, you're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them and it makes those tools more powerful because you'll know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to "go" when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea. So we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer and that's used to disperse medication that I need to give myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 2-1-1 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That could be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is. You know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in Paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house and we're watching a fire come down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster. So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that, she saved my life that day. So absolutely, having that network really saved lives. Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that "go" piece. And it's simply that, it's "go." Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones Fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place. You know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 2-1-1. We're here to support you.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven and we need you to know your zone.
This new tool is called Zone Haven and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them and it makes those tools more powerful because you'll know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
In this meeting of the Board of Supervisors of Nevada County, August 22, 2023. And Madam Clerk, we moved up an item that was scheduled for this afternoon and we said we would leave it open for phone calls. Have we received any calls?
Chair Schofield, remind me which item this one was?
Item number 34, the Climate Resilience.
Chair, we have not received any phone calls for that item.
Very good. Then we will move on. And we have had a request for, some folks haven't gotten here a little bit later. So we're going to move the agenda around a little bit here. And I think we are going to go to item number 36, which is Supervisor Bullock. Correct, Jeff? This is the resolution supporting and proclaiming October 4, 2023, as California Clean Air Day in Nevada County. Hardy?
I'm going to turn most of this over to Jeff. I got involved last year. There's a request to sponsor this objective. And it essentially centers on taking action steps at the county level to reduce, enhance air quality and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And, you know, a couple summers ago, it was a real issue we struggled with all summer and it hasn't been so much lately and we hope to keep it that way. Jeff really spearheaded working directly with the organization. So I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you so much Supervisor Bullock, Chair Schofield, members of the board. My name is Jeff Thorsby. I'm your Senior Management Analyst. And I'm pleased to bring forward to you today a resolution supporting and proclaiming October 4, 2023, as Clean Air Day in Nevada County. So a little bit of background. The Coalition for Clean Air, which was founded actually back in 1971, is an advocacy organization for air quality that works throughout the state. They reached out to our office, maybe I want to say about three years ago, maybe even four, actually, requesting that we bring forward a proclamation supporting Clean Air Day. And so this has actually come before your board the last few years. And so we wanted to highlight this with today's presentation on climate resilience and your climate resilience objective. We thought it'd be a good opportunity to highlight that. Specifically this year, October 4, 2023, will actually be the sixth California Clean Air Day, where individuals, organizations, businesses, and jurisdictions are invited to participate in pledging commitment to advocating clean air throughout California. If I go to website Clean, California Clean Air Day, which is built, they can sign on and pledge to taking various different initiatives to help support and promote clean air in California. In 2022 alone, and this is reported by the Coalition for Clean Air, participation grew by 11% to a total of 2 million participants, which included 56 of the 58 counties, 565 private organizations, and 14 transit agencies. So before you is really just a proclamation proclaiming October 4 as Clean Air Day. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Want to start?
No questions for me. I just, there's a number of action steps online if you look at Clean Air Day and being a part of that. And there's things that we can promote within our organization as well, which we will do. And I don't really have any questions. I'm just happy to bring it forward, happy to can sign on as a county. The reason I was asking the board to do it, the first year I was a supervisor, I just did it as a supervisor. I signed up online and now I'd like to share that with my colleagues on the board and make that from Nevada County. So we'd be one of the official county participants in Clean Air Day.
So this is the first time we've officially declared this.
I did actually go before your board last year on consent. But I think Supervisor Bullock was referencing that members of the public can go in and sign up themselves. And so last year, we just did a proclamation like we've done previous proclamations. But this is kind of the first time that we've really done a presentation and kind of articulated exactly what it is.
Okay. Hardy? Sue?
No, this was good. I just would be kind of fun or interesting. Do you have any ideas or can you cite some of the things that maybe different groups did to participate in this? Sorry, I should have asked you that ahead of time, but I just, that is kind of interesting. I didn't think about it when I read it. But, I mean, you know, like I know-
Carpooling.
Carpooling, something. So there's a lot of different things people can do individually to work as part of this. Nevada County doesn't tend to have the greatest issue that we create. A lot of it comes from Sacramento, right? So it's a little bit different for our county. So we have to work a little hard at it because we're getting it from somewhere else. So it'd just be kind of fun to see. What are some little ideas that groups could put together?
Absolutely. Thank you so much Supervisor. I have a list here that articulate-
Right off the top of his head.
So a couple, further replacing trees on the agency's property, replacing office heating, air conditioning filters, and before a maintenance on other office appliances in order to maintain efficiency, like we spoke about earlier, thinking about weather efficiency. Encouraging employees to carpool. Also telecommuting and promoting virtual participation meetings to decrease traveling. Offering design bike parking, including outlets to charge bikes and e-bikes. Advocating increasing infrastructure opportunities for electrical vehicles. Establishing monthly car-free days when everyone in the office is encouraged to walk or telecommute or bike. Could be challenging in some areas for us. Replacing fleet with less polluting vehicles, which our county is actually currently working on right now. Encouraging fleet drivers to participate by switching off engines when stopped instead of just idling. Driving as smooth as possible to avoid a rapid acceleration. Installing automatic light shut-offs in offices and buildings, which you can see that a lot of buildings are already outfitted that way. And providing subsidized transit passes. And I will just highlight, I know our transit program actually offers a free day for folks once a year. And so those are some potential actions that people take to advocate for Clean Air Day.
Thank you, Jeff. Before I go on, just to remind folks, if you're watching online, that if you would call in right now, there is a bit of a delay to get you on. So if you have a comment or question, please call in at this time and we'll bring you on as soon as we get you. Did you say any comments?
So I think this is great. I'm appreciative that you brought this forward. I would ask, remind us a few days before the actual day so that we can ride our bike to work or walk to work or, you know, be really aware, maybe promote a little bit more within our own communities that we represent. So thanks for doing it. But just remind me.
Good point. Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, you know, and I tend to think of our air quality district. I think we all have different, what does clean air mean to us? And often clean air is a forest fire in which we can hardly see up in this area here. But within our air quality district, we have Nevada, Sierra, and Plumas. Plumas County, the Portola area is a non-attainment area. There's, I mean, there's a very few of these areas within the United States. And theirs is caused by woodstoves, wood stove particles. At the same time, western Nevada County is a non-attainment area also, which is more from the valley and the issues that come up from Sacramento, the Bay Area, and lay up against our hillside. So there's not, there's not a whole lot that we can do. But anything we can do at this end at least helps when everything coming in. And the more we put out the word for Clean Air Day, the more the rural areas see that also, which impacts us. So Hardy, good job. Good job.
Jeff was, Jeff was key. Thanks. And I appreciate it. I think it's the right thing to do. And it kind of folds into things we're already doing.
Public comment, anyone? Dean, anybody online?
Nobody online and no written comment.
Okay. Then at this time, entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve October 4 as Clean Air Day in Nevada County.
Motion Supervisor Bullock.
I'll second.
Second Supervisor Hall, Madam Clerk.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
District 1.
Yes.
District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes. How are we, Jeff? Do we have people here that are, are we good? Okay. Then we are going back to item number 35. Is that right? This is a resolution approving a contract between the County of Nevada and Clean Tahoe for litter abatement services in parts of unincorporated East County in the total amount of $15,000 for the period of October 1, 2023 through September 30, 2024. Tricia?
Good afternoon. Tricia Tilson, your Community Development Agency Director. And it's my pleasure today to introduce Mandy Stewart. She's an administrative analyst with the CEO and the Board of the Supervisor's Office. And she's based in the Truckee area. So I just want to pass this on to Mandy for a quick discussion. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me okay? Sound check? Awesome. Thank you, Tricia. Thank you for that introduction. Good afternoon, Chair Schofield, members of the board. As you guys are well aware, in February 2023, the Nevada County Board of Supervisors adopted their 2023 priority objectives, which established the new objective of climate resilience. Pursuant to the work needed to meet this objective, the Nevada County Climate Resilience Ad Hoc Committee identified a need for litter and debris abatement in high-traffic areas of unincorporated, excuse me, unincorporated Eastern County to preserve the environmental integrity. The areas identified include Hurstville Recreation Area, Florston Bridge Area, Boca Alto Hokie Valley, Old Highway 40 from Donner Summit to the Truckee Town boundary, and including Johnson Canyon. As some of you may recall, Clean Tahoe was presented with a certificate of recognition by the Nevada County Board of Supervisors in October 2022 for their work in the community. I'm going to give just a brief coloring of Clean Tahoe and then turn it actually over to the Executive Director to present more on their organization. But Clean Tahoe is a nonprofit organization, which was formed in 1988 to address the growing litter and illegal dumping throughout South Lake Tahoe. Clean Tahoe expanded its service area to include North Lake Tahoe and Truckee in 2021. Based on this identified need and due to Clean Tahoe's existing contracts with our partner agencies of the town of Truckee and Placer County, we elected to partner with Clean Tahoe to address the litter challenges in the identified high-traffic areas of unincorporated Eastern County. Our initial contract being brought to you today is for one year and is sized at $15,000. Clean Tahoe will provide 10 hours of service per month across the identified high-impact areas. Additionally, Clean Tahoe's staff agree to respond to requests from county residents for litter and/or large debris cleanup as needed. The initial contract will function as a pilot program to evaluate the correct level of service needed over future periods. With that, I would like to introduce Katie Sheehan, Executive Director of Clean Tahoe, to present more about the mission of the organization. Thank you for your time.
Like Mandy said, my name is Katie. I'm the Executive Director of Clean Tahoe Program. And I did stand before you guys down in Grass Valley earlier this year. Really excited to be coming and helping the unincorporated areas of Nevada County that Mandy had identified. Like she said, Clean Tahoe has been around in South Lake for 30-something years. And in the last two years, we've taken that model to north and east sides of the lake and it's been really successful. And I don't see a reason why that wouldn't happen here. Besides picking up trash, I think a big benefit, especially to the local jurisdictions, is just having somebody on call. Like we have our guys out there five days a week. If there's an issue that you need photos of or response, like we're always out there. I think that's a big help. And I think people want, you know, somewhere to call and know that something's going to happen when it comes to trash. And I think that's a big benefit that we offer. So yeah, once the contract's signed, we'll look into schedule and like what those two days look like, what would be best and like what will fit the most with our schedule. And then like the, maybe the trends we see and like where the litter starts to build up and when. And then I'm work with, work with you guys to make sure it's going properly. But definitely in the first few months, too, I'll have a, you know, provide all the, all of our field service reports, what we're finding, where we're finding the most, and we can go from there and learn together. So, yeah.
Thank you, Kay.
You're welcome. Any questions or anything?
Well, you want to start it off, Hardy?
Thanks. Thanks, Mandy, and thanks, Katie. Katie and I got an opportunity to drive all the different locations that we thought may have, be in need of that service of, you know, picking up trash. And when you describe the process of finding like kind of special activity areas. So for example, with the county, where I'm going with all this is supporting our environmental health team in the areas in unincorporated Nevada County that may have a crisis situation. So for example, I was at Borial last week, running through on their trailhead and there's unincorporated Nevada County there and there's a whole section of road that's- And there's unincorporated Nevada County there. And there's a whole section of road that's not, it's county road, but it's not necessarily. Care take, you know, maintained by anybody in particular. And there's, there's a bunch of stuff out there. And so we can call and work with Katie and her team to specifically clean that one area. And so if, if environmental health had a problemed area, um, roadside or unincorporated area, Katie's team could go out there and address those issues and tell us what they're finding and maybe what the source is and how we could kind of combat that. So in addition to just, you know, uh, picking up litter and finding those areas, there's a lot more, um, pieces that go into that service. And, um, you know, that kind of highlighted what happened this summer in South Lake and areas in South Lake. I think trash and refuse and litter in our areas, um, it's kind of, kind of vertical. And it seems better to me, just, I don't know what your team's finding, but it seems better than it was a couple of years ago. At least in the recreational, in, you know, trailhead areas, but, um, I'm really excited about this. I'd like to see it, um, expanded to areas of Western County where we have problem areas. And I don't know what organization that may be, but I'm a huge supporter of doing this countywide. And I just thank you for your time and your, um, willingness to take on this next challenge. Because I think originally when you're, we met, you know, you've got a lot on your hands and it takes a lot of people to get it done. So I just really appreciate you being part of it.
Katie, I wonder if you would refresh us again, just how your organization works. Are you a volunteer organization or actually funded through some means besides 15,000?
Yeah. In South Lake, we're funded through a thing called the Clean Community Fund. And then, uh, the North Shore program is funded by, uh, local org, like local jurisdictions like yourself, taking money out of the general fund. And, uh, we have four guys in the field that work full time, five days a week. So it's not volunteer based. We have like a crew and small but mighty. And I do think what, um, Hardy was saying, the biggest thing is, um, you know, that response. We're out there five days a week with eyes on the streets, you know, looking at everything. And I don't think a lot of areas have, have that or, um, those kinds of organizations. And it really is beneficial. And after a while, you start to learn the land so well. And I'm really impressed with all my field guys. They know exactly what's going on, how solutions to offer right away, where it came from. You know what I mean? So, yeah.
Great. Thank you. And I want to remind anyone online, please call in at this point and we'll hold you for a while. Um, Hardy.
This is great, a great service that you're providing. And yeah, I wish we had something like that at the South Yuba River on the west side. And maybe we need to start finding people who would do that for us. That's great. Thank you.
Lisa.
Yeah, I think it's great. Also, um, I. I love the fact that people can call you and someone will pick up the phone and they can tell you where to go. Cause I know as elected officials, I haven't had it happen at the county yet, but when I was with the city of Grass Valley, I used to get those calls from people. Depending upon what it was, I would just go out and do it because it was easier than trying to get our trash haulers or whoever to do it. But, um, I, I think it's a great idea and I really would love to see us do something like this in the western side. I just, um, uh, last couple of weeks ago, I went out and toured one of the sites, um, that's, has a lot of homeless in it. That really needs to be cleaned up. And so starting kind of those community cleanups that can lend itself into a more permanent solution. Like having a, you know, group of people. And I actually might know somebody in Grass Valley who might want to do this for us. So great ideas. I might be calling you to get some more information on, on what you're doing. So thank you.
Katie, how did you originally create the, 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 uh, your business anyways?
Clean Tahoe in South Lake has been around for a lot, a long time. It came, uh, it was the city, the county, and actually the Board of Realtors and the Chamber of Commerce. All came together, put a board together and have been addressing these issues. Yeah, for, for quite a while.
So Tahoe is a little bit bigger than the Yuba, but we do have the South Yuba cohort that. Did something to think about. I remember the presentation that you gave earlier, Arcadia. I, I was very, very impressed with it. And I'm glad to see that $15,000 can do so much with your organization. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Yeah.
Looking forward to working with you.
Get a quick question, Katie. Is there an advocacy side that when you see an area that's problem and they've identified the source of that litter? Does your organization tell people like our county staff, hey, it's coming from vehicles or it's coming from illegal camping? And then we take action? Or do you have advocacy and educational programs that you help us work with? Or I guess, how do we stop it?
Yeah. Um, I guess it's on like a case to case basis. Like recently in South Lake, we saw a refrigerator in a, at a residence. And then we later saw that refrigerator dumped off of a road that we know. So like, I mean, I guess circumstantial, but as I said, like being on the streets five days a week, you start to really learn them. And, uh, at that point, what we find would just, I would want to work with your code enforcement. And that's kind of who we would just pass like all the photos and what we know along to, and then try to support them. You know, we're not really an enforcement, but we'll, we're the backup. So, yeah.
Just to piggyback on that, actually, since you're already working with the, um, with chambers of commerce. I mean, they would be the ones to help advocacy to educate people coming in too. Right? It would, because it'd be teamwork to educate people, tourism.
VTT, the DMO, uh, visit Truckee Tahoe.
Yeah.
Yeah. Whoever those groups are that are, yeah.
Yeah, we can kind of make, I think it's a great, the county is a great bridge to convene some of those organizations. So like through the South Yuba cohort or the triple C bringing, and hopefully we can get you and, you know, onto our triple C meetings in the South Yuba cohort. So you can see and talk to the people that are in those organizations.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And your organization is a great bridge for us too, Katie. So again, thank you so much. Is there any public comment on this, uh, questions, comments? Madam Clerk.
Chair, there are no written comment or callers on the line.
Okay. And I would say, thank you, Katie. I'm ready to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second motion Supervisor Hall, second supervisor Bullock, Madam Clerk.
District four.
District four, yes.
District, just. District three.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District five.
Yes.
District two.
Yes. Thank you, Dean. All right. Our next item is. The Donner Summit Region Presentation Highlighting County Investments and Activities Within the Region. And Donner Summit Association for their work to protect, promote and strengthen Donner Summit. And it looks like we have Kimberly Parker for presentation.
Absolutely. It doesn't look like my presentation. There's a set of just three slides.
So Chair, we need a few moments to go ahead and find, um, Ms. Parker's presentation, please.
All right, we'll take a quick, quick break here.
Good afternoon, Chair Schofield, Supervisors.
Let me reconvene.
I'm set.
We'll reconvene and we'll start up again. This is the Donner Summit Region Presentation, highlighting county investments and activities within the region and Donner Summit Association for their work to protect, promote, and strengthen Donner Summit. Kimberly?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Schofield, Supervisors, County Staff and Visitors. I'm Kimberly Parker, Program Manager for Economic Development at Nevada County. Today, we are reporting to you on the Donner Summit Region. I will highlight work that's been completed or is ongoing, and then Representatives from the Donner Summit Association will provide a presentation to you regarding their activities. We're fortunate to have strong partners in the work being done at Donner Summit. The work of the Donner Summit Association is impressive. As you know, the county has committed $500,000 to their Visitor Center project, and I'm sure they'll share more about that with you when they speak. We're also grateful to be in the backyard of the U.S. Forest Services, and because of the proximity of both Nevada and Placer County, there's a strong collaborative relationship in moving projects forward between the counties. There's also been tremendous engagement with some of our community-based organizations, including Circle, Truckee Donner Land Trust, Truckee Trails Foundation, and others. With regards to businesses and residents, its challenging circumstances have made it very difficult to live and work in the area. Paramount influences the weather, although residents and businesses have also been impacted by road construction, smoke, rock slides, and more. I want to personally thank the Board for your recent support of $20,000 from the Outdoor Visitor Safety Funds. I look forward to working with the businesses in this Donner Summit area on next steps for marketing and promotion to the region to heighten tourism and shopping to their venues. Regarding infrastructure, thanks to the Federal Land Access Program, 6.5 miles of Donner Pass Road were rehabilitated and included the addition of bicycle lanes, enhanced pole outs, and parking areas. This project was substantially completed in 2022, although there are still little final touches going on this summer. There's also exciting work that you've heard a lot about regarding recreation impacts and projects. As you know, the county has provided grant awards to community organizations through its Outdoor Visitor Safety Fund in two rounds, June of 2022, and more recently in August of this year. The projects and the programs included portable toilets and a dumpster at highly impacted areas on the summit, and Trail Ambassadors year-round that's managed by the Truckee Trail Foundation. Also, $59,000 has been to support recreation infrastructure at Van Norden Meadow, and some of you, I think, are going over to tour that area, and you'll see the sensitive habitat and the vault toilets, the trail signage, and more. And specifically recreation as it relates to Van Norden Meadows, you'll hear from Circle as well, and their work on the project there. The county had some significant role in that project, including the Planning Department, who served as Sequo lead on the project managed by Circle. And in addition, our CDA rec, Erica Seward, submitted $565,000 grant as the lead applicant for the State Habitat Conservation Program, and that would expand recreation and trailhead development, and we'll hear about that later this year. As mentioned above, marketing Donner Summit with the goal of driving people to business is a priority. Working hand-in-hand with our Recreation Office, regional nonprofits and agencies, visit Tahoe Truckee, the DSA, GoNevada.com, our ski resorts and others, I believe we're starting to see heightened education for visitors who are exploring both a potential visit by looking online or looking for information once they arrive in the area. Broadband continues to be a priority for our county. Steve Monahan, Director of Information and General Services, Sarah Hollyhead, now with our CEO office, our Sierra Business Council staff, including Carrie Sinoff, Stevie Roberts, and Kristen York, along with the broadband working group, are focusing attention on how to best serve this region. Going forward, the Economic Development Office will continue to provide assistance as needed. While there are challenges to be addressed, there are numerous strengths that I see in the area, including historical name identity, proximity to I-80, proximity to some of major ski resorts, the natural beauty that draws people to the area, rustic small-town atmosphere, proximity to Truckee and shopping and other amenities, and then proximity to high-income population with second homes in Serene Lake and Sugar Bowl. The Economic Development Office wants the businesses in Donner Summit to know that we have an open-door policy with an interest in their problems and how we can help serve them going forward. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer questions if you have any, and then I will invite the Donner Summit Association Representatives to come forward.
Why don't we invite them to come forward at this time?
Okay. At this point, I'd like to introduce Pat Mulberg and Bill Odegeist.
I think I get to go first. My name is Pat Mulberg, and I'm the President of the Donner Summit Association, and thank you for inviting us today. We really appreciate it. We have a huge passion for that beautiful area, and so we want people to know about it but not to abuse it. The first thing we're going to do, because you asked for it, I think, is our vision. So, we envisioned Donner Summit as a vibrant, cohesive, year-round mountain community that provides opportunities for the residents, businesses, and visitors alike to thrive in a beautiful alpine environment. And then our mission is a little bit longer. For the benefit of its residents, businesses, and visitors alike, the DSA, that's Donner Summit Association, will promote and strengthen Donner Summit, protect its heritage, steward its future, and provide a voice for the entire community through its leadership as an advocate for economic investment in appropriate infrastructure via long-range master planning, a liaison with government authorities, a coordinator and promoter of local projects and events. And I think our next slide is about the area plan, so I thought I'd give you just a little background into how we got to the area plan to begin with. The 2004 Economic Development Study that was conducted by Nevada County was the catalyst for the Donner Summit community coming together to form a pre-incarnation of the Donner Summit Association, we called it the Donner Summit Area Association, because we realized that we really needed a voice for our area. This was made even more urgent when Foster and Siem made public their plans to develop 10,000 acres that included the gem of the area, the Van Norden Meadow that you're going to see today. It really is a gem, and their project would have changed the entire spirit and culture of Donner Summit, for sure. For 10 years then, the DSA worked with the community to hold information seminars on planning and other topics, conduct area-wide surveys, and two summit summits, as well as fundraising, all in an effort to defeat the Foster-Siem development, and it worked. It also had an added benefit, that was that we became more familiar with county personnel and operations, culminating in the award-winning Soda Springs area plan, which has served us tremendously over the years since, and that was in 2014. Then, over the next few years, the newly-named Donner Summit Association, which is the current name, applied almost annually for grants from Placer County's TOT, the Transient Occupancy Tax Funds, and they received funding, we received funding for our, let's see, yeah, for our Gateway Monument. It was a design grant and then a construction grant, and then the feasibility study. Then the feasibility study in 2018, Phase 1 and Phase 2, and then the trailhead hub that Bill is going to talk about on Old Donner Summit, that's what it looked like before we did our work, and most recently for the, sorry, I'm not used to this, that's what that shed looks like, so please look at it carefully, because you will see today how it's transformed. And then, in 2019, we started the recreation plan, and it is just now being completed, so it takes a little while to do those recreation plans. Each of the projects has involved many volunteers and resulted in our partnership base being widened and strengthened. All the while, we've held an annual community-wide spring cleanup, and the annual 4th of July picnic has now morphed into an annual fall beer fest. This year, it's October 14th at Soda Springs, and you're all invited. Most recently, the plan for a visitor's center has expanded to be more of an everywhere, oh dear, an everywhere visitor's center, and I don't have a pointer, but at one end is the hub that you're going to see today, the transformation of that ugly old shed, and then today you will see Van Norden Meadow, and we're hoping that at the west end, that will be another type of visitor amenity, similar to what we have at the top. And then at Cisco, there's already the toilets, the park there is already ready for a little bit of additional development. So, the thing about this everywhere visitor's center is that there will be no staff required at any of the centers. And then, for the past four years, we've organized graffiti abatement projects to cover over some of the most obvious and egregious defacing of the historic transcontinental railroad tunnels and snowsheds. This has led to our partnership with the 1882 Foundation that you've heard about, I think, and their effort to have the railroad tunnels that were drilled by Chinese workers during two years, from 1866 to 68. They want that whole area named as a historic landmark, national historic landmark. We very much support this effort, as well as their vision of an interpretive center somewhere on the summit with docents and research opportunities. So, that's what we've been about, and I'm going to turn it over to Bill Odegeist, who's our Vice President, and he'll present the background on the Trail Hub East at Old Donner Summit, and thank you so much.
These are some volunteers getting rid of the graffiti. Well, that's okay, we can do them now, because I've got to go through them in order to get to what I'm going to do. And here's before and after what they did, but it's an ongoing project. They go out and paint over the graffiti, and the next day, there's places to paint over the graffiti again. So, I've come to tell you a little story about a scrappy little community. The economy had been going downhill for decades, but the community had so much to offer: gorgeous scenery, world-class recreation opportunities in the summer and the winter, amazing biological diversity, 500 species of plants, 115 species of butterflies, 100 species of birds, dozens of species of mammals and amphibians. A lot of places have gorgeous scenery and amazing biological diversity and world-class recreation. What sets Donner Summit apart is that it's the most historically significant square mile in California and maybe the entire western United States. The problem was, even though more people were coming to Donner Summit, they didn't know what to do or how to do it when they got there, they didn't know what was available or how to get to what was available. So, the scrappy little community embarked on a unique project. They developed a trailhead of trailheads where visitors could see the wonders of Donner Summit and then go out and experience them. Now, this is what it looks like today, and I understand you got an invitation to come up to Donner Summit afterwards that all of you are going to take us up on, because then you'll get to touch all of this in person. This is what it, whoops, this is what it looked like to begin with. And this is what it looks like today, which looks quite a bit different, but it's also unique. Besides being a good project, it's unique because, number one, it sits in Nevada County, that's Nevada County land, but it was done with two grants from Placer County. There's also the unique centerpiece, that old building there with the overhang on it, which was a gas station for the division of highways in the 1930s when they were plowing, when they started to plow Highway 40. And there are other components of it, too. We've got displays, we've got a concrete pad that serves as a lectern. There's an ADA-compliant path that takes you out to the central shaft with some interpretive signage there. This is a close-up of our concrete pad, and you can see that we've taken the railroad theme, Trail 6 is 88 feet below this spot, and put that on the surface. So, we laid rails, we laid ties, and we built those carts to evoke the railroad, which is important to Donner Summit history. Another reason that it's really exceptional is that it is mostly done by volunteers: new siding, sheer panels, repairing the truss, a new roof, new door, bike repair station, bike rack, cleaning up 60 years of detritus, grating and spreading, displays, border placement, placement of the ties and the rails, building the carts. And so, here are our volunteers. And this lady just talked to you. You see, everybody was allowed on the equipment to go and do what they needed to be done. And then, of course, there was also stuff we paid for, cementwork welding and paving. And pretty much the entire community was involved. Here's a partial list on a plaque that's on the building that shows people involved and organizations. Here's another one. Look at the bottom of that, and you can see the different organizations that participated or participate with us: Placer County, Nevada County, Sugar Bowl, Soda Springs Ski Area, Boreal Ski Area, Donner Summit Historical Society, Truckee Donner Land Trust, Pacific Crest Trail Organization, Donner Ski Ranch, Nancy O'Glass, and the largest homeowners association, Serene Lakes. And lots of people have given money, too. These are some of the plaques that are on different parts of the hub project. And then, of course, there are the exhibits. Each one is four feet by four feet. They have lots of nice pictures, there's lots of good texts that people can spend a lot of time walking around and looking at. This year, we added shade sails, which make the summer, it can be kind of hot up there, and it makes it a little bit more pleasant to be able to sit in the shade. And then, for you, especially today, we're going to take a trip to the Most Inspirational Square Yard. And I told you that Donner Summit is the most historically significant square mile in California, and that's true, but within that most historically significant square mile is the Most Inspirational Square Yard. Let's take a look at that. Now, here is a nice place, this is at the hub, it's behind one of the buildings. You can go up and contemplate things, enjoy the scenery, look at all of the history that is from Donner Lake all the way up through the pass. So, that's an exceptional project that we've been doing on Donner Summit, and I'm glad to see, we're glad to see that you're going to come up and visit. And we have an eye on the future. At the west end of Van Norden, we'd like to see a hub west, and you can see that it's getting ready here. We need cooperation from the counties, of course, but most of all, we need cooperation from the Forest Service, since this piece will be transferred to the Forest Service from the Land Trust shortly. So, that's what we have to tell you, and we can answer all kinds of questions, but better is for you to come up and visit. Next step is Alicia Wiseman from Circle, and she's going to tell you a little bit about the Van Norden project.
Any tricks to this clicker?
You just push the buttons.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thanks for having me. My name's Alicia Wiseman from the South Yuba River Citizens League. I'm the Headwater Science Program Director and Project Manager of the Van Norden Meadow Restoration and Recreation Project. You'll have to excuse me, I'm coming straight from the meadow, so I didn't have time to change into my kind of meadow clothes, a little sunscreen on my face, but I'll be going back this afternoon. Let's see if we're at the end of your slides, maybe not. Okay, okay. So, Van Norden Meadow, it's a really unique site, it's almost 500 acres, it's 485 acres of high-elevation meadow. This site is really unique in that it's on both Nevada and Placer Counties, and it's a meadow that, like Pat mentioned before, was saved from development by the DSA and the Truckee Donner Land Trust and the Donner Summit community. At that time, the majority of the meadow was held for a little while by the Truckee Donner Land Trust and then transferred to the Tahoe National Forest. Circle became involved with this meadow because it was sort of assessed and decided that it would be a good candidate for meadow restoration. So, the Tahoe National Forest and Circle have been working together on this meadow since 2013. We, through the planning process, developed a stakeholder group, and that included Sugar Bowl, Soda Springs, the Donner Summit Association, Truckee Donner Land Trust, other researchers and scientists from UC Davis and UNR, the Washoe Tribe. And through that process, as we were working through how we were going to restore this meadow, one thing that came up pretty quickly is the need for recreation in this site and how we go about restoring the meadow and keeping recreation as a viable option. Currently, there are user-created trails at this site, and our main goal is to develop a formalized trail alignment. I'm not going to go too much into the restoration project, because I don't have, you know, 20 to 30 minutes to kind of talk about all of those things, but one thing I do want to say is that as we kind of moved out of the planning phase and we decided at that time that this was going to be a restoration and recreation project, we moved forward with our NEPA and SEQUA. As someone mentioned earlier, the county was the lead on our ISMND SEQUA document, so we've been collaborating with the county as well. And, you know, we developed a trail alignment at that time so that we could sort of, you know, certain things that we needed to do for restoration, we could also be planning for recreation at the same time. So, this trail alignment you can see on the screen here is almost a five-mile loop that circumnavigates the meadow. One key piece to this, let's see, does it not have a pointer? If you guys see the yellow camera that's sort of on the South Yuba River there, and it's labeled the Meadow Bisect Road, that is a really key piece. It's gated, so it's open to the Forest Service, Sugar Bowl, PG&E for traffic, it's used in the winter for cross-country ski trails, but otherwise, it's predominantly used for recreationists, and that's a really key piece of the whole loop, and it was also very much a key piece of the restoration project. That road was concentrating flows, it was a hydrologic impediment, so it's important to us to improve that road, and that included the replacement of a 120-foot bridge. That piece of the recreation project has been funded in part by Placer County and the Wildlife Conservation Board. The restoration piece of the project has been funded to date by Truckee Donner Land Trust, the MARTIS Fund, Tahoe National Forest, Wildlife Conservation Board, and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. To date, through the assessment, planning, and implementation, it's about an $8 million project to date. That does not include the grants that we're currently working on, Erica and I together to secure additional funds to complete this trail. Also, Nevada County recently awarded Circle $59,000 to help with the development of the trailhead, so that will be the one that's on Nevada County. There are two trailheads planned, one on Placer County side at the Sheet Pens, which you can see is labeled, and one that's closer to the spillway. We're also coordinating with the DSA so that the hub west, or this second trailhead of trailheads, we can coordinate so that we have a trailhead for Van Norden near bathrooms and the trailhead of trailheads that DSA is working on. So, those vault toilets have not been built yet, that's what we received the funding from you guys for, it's likely going to happen next summer, but we will get to tour the site that Bill had in the photo, where you can see that during restoration, we graded a site for a future parking area. And with that, I'll keep it a little bit high level, but I just want to thank the county for your partnership and dedication to the project. I think there's a lot of potential with this site by restoring the ecology and the hydrology. We're already seeing just more wildlife and a lot of different plants and improved carbon sequestration at this site. Meadow restoration is a tool that can stimulate and encourage carbon storage in high-elevation meadows. This carbon is even more protected because it's safe from high severity wildfire in a wet environment, so it's just another reason that, you know, these meadows are so important to Circle and others in our community. And that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great presentation. I want to remind anyone that is calling in or online to call in now, and we will get you later on as we get into this. Sue, I'm going to start with you on this. Sorry, Hardy.
I know, this is Hardy's backyard more.
Yeah, I know.
But, no, what an incredible undertaking to think that could have been development, and then all that work went into the conservation of this beautiful area. So, yeah, I'm excited to see how this really plays out. It's going to be, I think it's a win-win, I think especially for, like, the Soda Springs side, I think that'll be wonderful, and included, what a great place to start a trail and make the whole big loop in a day, you know? That's fantastic. So, I have, I'm thrilled that we're a part of that, that Erica, she's working with you, doing a great job, is she here? There she is, back there, she's our little, she's always looking at things and ways to do benefit our trails. Tricia, I mean, really, we have a team that takes this seriously and knows it's important for our whole area, so thank you for the presentation. It was nice to meet both of you, even though it's just via the podium. We'll look forward to spending time up in your neck of the woods, I think that's exciting. I think the county's engaged in what's going to be happening up your way. So, thank you for the presentation from all of you. No questions from me.
Thanks. It's always amazing to me what a small group of very dedicated, passionate people can do quietly behind the scenes, but the impact that it had saving this particular piece of property is extremely impressive. I've kind of been following your association a little bit since I got elected at the county, and having been involved in a business association for many years, I understand the value of that, and I'm really happy that the county has jumped on board and wants to work with you to make sure that those businesses survive and the community up there thrives. So, happy to have seen what you guys are doing, and I look forward to touring that site, and it's been, I remember, I think the last time I was there was perhaps in grammar school or grade school, they used to take field trips up to Donner. But, yeah, just really impressive with the work that you've done. It's nice to see you, Pat, I can't remember the last time I saw you, it's been a long time, so it's good to see you up here, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm so excited, I've been waiting for months to get to see this area through the eyes of the folks who are doing the restoration and the rehabilitation, so this is great, and I look forward to coming back here after I know more about it and hiking it on my own. Thank you.
You want to go?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation, thanks, Bill and Pat, for all the work you do up there. I was talking to Jeff, and I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've never had a MAC, a municipal area commission, on Donner Summit, and I think it's in part basically And I think it's in part based on the work that you've done to coordinate the business community and the recreational community and also the residential, you know, because Serene Lakes is in Placer County, but Soda Springs is in unincorporated Nevada County. So I think you're making great strides up there. It's a place that's really near and dear to my heart, and I've seen it over many years having spent a lot of time up there. And I think this is a great start. I mean, the preservation of the meadow just in and of itself is worth so much. You know, we've struggled the last couple of years to keep the road open. So we had the paving project, and then we had the snow, and so we have the rocks, the rocks, too. But I'm pretty confident the road's going to open pretty soon, which will have the thoroughfare open again and get people coming through there. I'm anxious to go see particularly the two trailhead areas. You know, it's interesting that this is the headwaters of the South Yuba, right? The part that goes all the way through our communities. South Yuba starts right there, so it's going to be great to see it. I just wanted to point out a few of the things that with Donner Summit in Soda Springs that I deal with, and maybe we have already talked about them or know them, maybe you don't, but Jeff and I have spent, and Mandy spent a fair bit of time with the Washoe Tribe, talking about their cultural resources and the protection of their resources, and they're very critical. I know that running NEPA and SEQA on this meadow certainly identified the critical resources that need protection, but there's other areas that will continue to need protection from visitors and people that don't mean harm, but maybe inadvertently create that, and other people who go directly out there just to see, and the tribe has expressed their concern with people taking artifacts, you know, chipping rocks off and taking them away. So I think there's work to do to work together because I know we all talk about the economic benefit of historical tourism and coming to that area that Bill described as being the kind of the most historic square mile anywhere. But I think it's going to take a balance on everybody's part, and you and I, you know, we've talked about these things before in other meetings, but the Summit Summit is a great opportunity for us to get all those voices in one place and talk. This is another area that's really, I think it's critical for Supervisor Gustafson and the Placer County Board and the Nevada County Board to work together, right? Because it's an interface area. The one piece I'm hearing a little bit about, too, is the speed limit on the road, and Tricia and I have talked a lot about that. The speed limit, the posted speed limit is a little higher than what people, I think, want, and I'm not sure what the solution may be there, but we could talk about that in the future. And then I wanted to touch base really quickly on the east and west version. I talked to John Swan with the land trust, and a lot of the recreation at that Donner Summit in the winter is just basically snow play. So people coming up from the city, not necessarily skiing or snowboarding, but just basically to have a picnic and play in the snow. So is it the vision of the DSA and maybe others to create an area on the western side? Or is that more Cisco? The snow play would be in Cisco. Okay. And this would be, would this be year-round? Would skiers use it? No, just in the summer? Okay. Yeah.
Problem is parking, clearing for parking is very expensive, so somebody would have to step forward to take care of it.
To handle the snow removal. Okay. Yeah, well, thank you. I appreciate your time, and I look forward to doing the visit out there and seeing what's going on.
Sure, come up to the microphone. Is it Alicia?
Yes. Just wanted to give a little more detail about the Washoe Tribe's involvement. When we were developing this trail alignment, it's very much developed to avoid all sites and also draw people away from sites. These two little, kind of look like an envelope, they're bridges, and then if you go to the next camera icon right in the middle, that is envisioned to be a platform that looks into the meadow. It happens to be pretty close to a cultural site where we went out with Darrell Cruz and identified a site where we could pull the trail a little bit south and then put a platform. So a lot of creative thinking went into how do we sort of like, at this spot, we can draw people into the meadow and away from these rocks that might be sort of enticing. And the other thing is around Castle Creek, that's where a lot of the user-created trails are now, and that's an area that the Washoe has expressed that we kind of get rid of the picnic table there, completely reroute the trail, and I know the Forest Service is committed to that. We're also working with them on the interpretive signage language, and essentially I'm working with the Forest Service and they're, you know, we're getting together sort of like a tack that we'll share with Bill and the Washoe Tribe and other partners to make sure we're getting the language right.
Thanks for mentioning that. That's a lot of work, and it's key. Yeah, appreciate it.
Sue?
So you brought up Forest Service again. So where are they in this whole conversation that would help with the parking? Because if this is actually a Forest Service properties, and are they going to, I mean, I know our trails group does a fantastic job, everyone, of maintaining the trails, where your land trust, trails groups. So where does Forest Service fit into that part, and have they budgeted for it?
Yeah, so the trailhead that we'll go visit today, that's marked here by the spillway, right now it's Truckee Donner Land Trust property, but it should be transferred to the Forest Service in the next few months. It's been graded for parking. They're committed to allowing parking at a trailhead there with restrooms and maintaining that. In terms of winter use, that's sort of a whole nother discussion. There's just a little bit of detail that needs to be worked out between Soda Springs and the Forest Service with an easement. So I think it's just, we're in the process of working that all out. The Forest Service is very much engaged. They're going to be at the tour later today. So they're committed and engaged to this project, but it does take some formalities and things that we'll have to work through that they just have to adhere to because, as you guys know, you know, for the federal government.
Yeah, Soda Springs, I believe, uses that area as winter overflow parking?
Yeah, they have, yeah, so as part of the restoration project and our grading efforts to prepare for a future trailhead, we also tapered into their lot and improved their lot as well. So yeah, they have winter parking on their property, but whether there's future extension of their winter parking onto Forest Service land, you know, that's to be determined. Yeah.
Ed, could I mention one more piece?
Sure. I'll get my piece in at some point. No, you go ahead.
I just want to mention Erica had a great idea when we were talking over lunch because we gave a grant of $20,000 to do some essentially marketing and business development and economic development on Donner Summit based on all the road closures for the couple of years. And so the concept of Donner Summit being the jumping off point to all these other areas that aren't necessarily, you know, they may be in Placer County, like Palisades Creek and Kid Lake and Long Lake, and then Donner Summit, Castle Peak, Fordice, Old Forty itself, and the Pacific Crest Trail, like you can go in any direction right there and get to world-class recreational amenities. So really trying to maybe further develop that concept with DSA in the marketing or branding, maybe instead of just media buys, maybe actually doing some community branding to let people know about that area. So I thought that was innovative. Erica, I'm sure will talk more about that in Recreation Circles and things.
Kimberly?
Yeah, and Kimberly coming up doing that. So anyway, I just want to mention it's a cool opportunity to use that grant funding.
I think I, the Pacific Crest Trail trailhead, is it boreal? Is that right? Yeah, but it does connect into, as you go, what is that, south? As you go south, it would connect into this area, right?
Goes right where they go.
Oh.
It crosses.
Okay, yeah.
Pacific Crest Trail goes right through there. That's part of it's in Nevada County, too.
Sure.
Bill, if you wouldn't mind using the microphone so that we can hear you.
Sorry, Bill. So Alicia, we had the opportunity to have a lunch, and I think that was thanks to Heidi that we put that together. And I was very, very impressed with the program at that time and thought, gee, this would be a great tour to take when we have the opportunity. So I think we're going to have that opportunity. But you know, the thing that I was really thinking the most about with the DSA program coming up here was the area plans. And I don't know who came first. I believe it was Donner Summit or was it Penn Valley? Donner Summit, yeah, that's what I kind of thought. Donner Summit, Soda Springs. And it just seems like the area plans, because so we went from there to Penn Valley down to my district with the Higgins area plan, that has really turned into something. I think the CDA and the Planning Department really deserve a lot of credit for this and putting together these plans because they've turned into something. I mean, look at what the DSA is doing with that program. Look at what Penn Valley is doing. I think getting ready to raise the roof is what I heard the other day. And I think in the Higgins area, I think we're going to see a multimodular walkway, pathway from our high schools out to Highway 49. I'm so impressed. It's all come out of our area plans. And I think in our case, again, I think it's a body. We have a municipal advisory commission. You guys have a DSA, you have a MAC, also a chamber, a good Chamber of Commerce, but I think out of my area, will be some type of an organization will come out and will carry on this plan, much better than the original Higgins plan in my case, which kind of went on a shelf, although they're followed, but they're kind of on a shelf. And these are not going on a shelf. I think this is really, really great, and I thank you for all the efforts because that's what it takes beyond creating the plan is people dedicated to it. So I'm truly looking forward to going out there today, and maybe if I show up, we can get out there quicker, huh? With that, is there any other public comment on this project? Seeing none, I think everybody wants to go out there. Team, any calls?
No calls, no written comment.
There should have been at least one call today, don't you think? Okay, then I think I'm ready to entertain a motion on this presentation.
So moved.
Motion, motion Supervisor Bullock?
Second.
Supervisor Hook, I don't know, is this a voice vote? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.